We will begin our M A Z C meeting of November 18. Call to the Order of Metro Historic Zoning Commission Meeting of November 18, 2020. Out of an abundance of caution and pursuant to recommendations from federal, state, and local health agencies regarding avoiding group gatherings due to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting is a teleconference meeting. Advanced public comments were possible through email, mail, and voicemail. We will also take live comments via phone. The phone number is (629) 255-1911. And please hold your call until the project you wish to speak about is announced. I will take the roll call for commissioners, and when I call your name, please say present. Vice Chair Stewart? Commissioner Fitz?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson? I'll come back. Commissioner Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Mahal? Commissioner Mosley?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Okay. I'll call back to Vice Chair Stewart, who'll probably come in later, and Commissioner Mahal. However, we have quorum, so we will continue.
And Commissioner Johnson, should we try her?
Oh, yes. Commissioner Johnson, are you able to hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We will call you present.
Yes, I'm present.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. The commission must vote on the record that the COVID-19 pandemic requires us to hold a telephonic meeting as permitted under the Governor's Executive Order Number 65. I will ask for a motion to hold this electronic meeting, so please raise your hand for the motion and also for the second. Commissioner Mosley?
So moved.
Okay. And Commissioner Williams?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And I will again take a roll call for the motion. Vice Chair Stewart? Not here yet. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under two minutes and to reserve two minutes as a rebuttal of public comment. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. We have not received any such requests for this meeting. No voicemails were received. Members of the public calling in will be heard. And Ms. Ziegler, are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have three different cases that have requested deferral. 307 North 16th, 208 Gentry, and 616 Fatherland.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion about that revision by the commissioners?
And this is Robin again. I'll also add to that, we'd like to defer the Design Guideline consolidation project. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ziegler? I don't see any hands raised for any discussion on that revision. I would need to have a motion to accept the revised agenda. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I move to accept the revised agenda.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you. And I will take the roll call of that motion. Vice Chair Stewart? Vice Chair? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Before we begin with the first case, Ms. Ziegler, are there any council members who wish to speak?
We did not receive any advance notice, and I don't see anyone here on the call with us.
Okay, thank you. And first, our agenda is approval of the minutes of October 21, 2020. Does anyone have any comments or revisions or discussion on the minutes? Okay. Would someone like to propose a motion? Yes, Vice Chair, to accept the minutes.
I move to accept the minutes.
Okay. There's a second, and Commissioner Fitz has her hand up.
I second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a comment when we're finished with this motion.
Okay, thank you. And I will call the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Fitz, you have the voice.
Oh, yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let you know that we are experiencing the delay again. I am hearing people say yes that you are not hearing, so I think if people can perhaps say yes twice, or if we just have a little bit of patience with that. But there is, I'm hearing people you are not hearing, so I just wanted to let you know.
Commissioner Fitz, you are correct. This is Sharda from Metro I T S. There is a delay, so for those of you who are using your computer microphone, if you could, let the microphone unmute for a second before you give your response, and I think that we'll be able to hear it better on our end.
Thank you. Understood. Thank you so much, Ms. Sharda. Okay, now is the time for the public to call in if someone would like an item removed from the consent agenda by calling (629) 255-1911. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda will be moved to the end of the agenda. And Ms. Saajit will read the cases proposed for the consent agenda, then we will have discussion.
Yes, the first item on the consent agenda is approval of the administrative permits issued for the month. Second is for an addition at 1708 Shelby Avenue, followed by new construction of an outbuilding that includes a dwelling unit at 1805 Russell Street, an addition and partial demolition at 1424 Sumner Avenue, new construction of an addition with partial demolition at 2012 Cedar Lane, an addition and setback determination at 2531 Ashwood Avenue, an addition at 1506 Beechwood Avenue, and an addition and outbuilding at 2518 Blair Boulevard. Staff recommends approving these projects along with their applicable conditions as noted in the staff reports.
Thank you, Ms. Saajit. Are there any requests to remove any item from the consent?
We have not received any prior request from the public. There are no callers, and so if a commissioner has anything they would like removed, they can just raise their hand.
So I'm also looking online to be sure no one has their hand raised, or the commissioners have their hand raised. Seeing no hands and no call-ins, request a motion. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
I second that motion.
Thank you. We'll take a roll on the motion and the second. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. I was also being very patient. So thank you, Ms. Sharda, for giving us that moment. Now is the time for anyone to call if they have public comment regarding a dormer at 1020 Seymour Avenue. And Ms. Saajit will do the presentation.
So this case was deferred from the October agenda, and just to note, several emails from neighbors in support of the application, as well as an email from the council member, were received prior to that meeting, and they have been included with the staff recommendation for this month. So the house located at 1020 Seymour Avenue is a circa 1910 bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Greenwood neighborhood. A rear dormer was added to the house without a preservation permit or building permit. According to Metro's permitting system, the Codes Department issued a stop work order on June 8 of this year. However, the property owners never saw that. The dormer is constructed, does not meet the Greenwood design guidelines, but the owners would like to request to keep it as constructed. The location of the addition at the rear of the existing building is in accordance with the design guidelines. The dormer, however, is not inset two feet from the sidewalls as required by Section 2B2A of the guidelines. The two-foot inset is a standard requirement that helps differentiate the addition from the historic house, ensures that if the addition were to be removed in the future, the historic character of the house would remain intact and prevents an addition from overwhelming the historic building. Staff doesn't find that there are any conditions relating to the existing house or a lot that would warrant not requiring this two-foot inset. In conclusion, staff would recommend that the dormer be inset a minimum of two feet on each side in order to meet Section 2B2A for additions, or the dormer may be removed, reconstructing the previous conditions. Staff further recommends that the correction be completed within 60 days of the decision.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Saajit. Is the applicant on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Please announce your name.
My name is Ethan Spencer.
And how are you representing the applicant?
I am the homeowner.
Okay, all right, Mr. Spencer. Yes, you have the voice.
All right. So just to give some background of our situation, my wife and I refinanced our home in May of this year, taking out equity and using our savings to expand our two sons' bedrooms to make room for our third son, who arrives September 23. So we informed our contractor, Uzi Schmuley of American Services of Tennessee, that we, in fact, live in a historic preservation neighborhood. We discussed with him the permit process and the requirements of renderings, and he promised us that he would handle everything, told us not to worry. So the construction began in late May, was completed in early July, and the addition includes just a dormer. It does not increase the footprint of the home, but simply expands our older son's bedrooms. On September 2, we received the letter from your office dated August 28. So that stated that our rear dormer was completed without a permit and was thus a violation. This was the first we had heard of any violation or lack of permits, and again, we were told by our contractor previously that he would handle all of these issues with the city. So upon seeking further clarification, we discovered a complaint was made to your commission on June 2 of 2020, and that a stop work order was reportedly made June 8. However, no sign was ever posted at our home stating that construction should stop. We were never notified by your commission or Codes. We were still under the impression that our contractor had followed proper protocols and had no reason to think that there were any issues until receiving that letter September 2. And that was approximately three months after construction had begun. That letter was received two months after construction was completed. So this project was also during my summer break. I'm a school psychologist in Wilson County Schools. My wife works retail, so, you know, we were in the summer quarantine lockdown. Both of us were home every day during these documented visits by Fred Zahn, which can be seen on this slide. So June 3, June 12, June 19, we were home all those days, often on our front porch in the mornings as we're awoken early by our children. So, and perhaps, you know, afterwards, I don't know if Mr. Zahn could share methods of documented notification when I'm done talking. We saw no signs posted either by Historic Zoning Commission or by Codes on our yard or taped near the entrance, and we weren't contacted in any way by Mr. Zahn or anyone else other than that August 28 letter. I understand that Codes leaves a big notice stuck to the front door, so I contacted Alex Hayes, who was the gentleman at Codes who, per ePermits, was in charge of the stop work order on June 8. He said he didn't remember our specific case because of his busy schedule, but usually he takes pictures of all posted orders, and he was unable to find a picture of our notice. Since then, I have been in contact with Bill Herbert, Director of Codes, and Byron Hall, Deputy Director. They've both helped me, guided me on how to make the permit issue in compliance. I was assured by Bill Herbert that we are well on our way to clearing up this issue from Codes' perspective at least, and he did give me permission to drop his name, by the way. And I'll further make note that since this issue became apparent to us, we have diligently worked to right this situation through all the proper channels and procedures. I think, had we been notified, or if any notice had been posted, we would have promptly and emphatically told our contractor to cease construction and demand that he follow the proper protocols before continuing. We're not people that break rules or attempt shortcuts, and I think unfortunately, it's our belief that we were notified during these dates that are listed on the ePermits. Admittedly, as consumers, we were misled by our contractor, and currently, he reports that he's severely ill with COVID-19. He says he cannot afford to make the suggested corrections, and when I told him, you know, that things could get litigious, he said that if we chose to sue him, that he would just file for bankruptcy. So I think additionally, as citizens of Metro Davidson County, information that could now financially devastate us after the fact with an estimated cost of $19,885 appears not to have been shared initially. So unfortunately, we're just normal Joes. We're not well-versed in the world of contractors and permits and zoning, and I do feel that we're upstanding citizens and neighbors, and we gladly follow the rules and laws of our community, and again, would happily have intervened on June 8 had we been properly informed. You know, we profusely apologize for our part in this mistake, especially as the historic character of our home and the neighborhood are the main reasons we chose to move here. We now understand that the aspects of the dormer do not follow the commission's parameters as the side of the dormers are not inset two feet. We understand that, you know, we're at the mercy of the commission's discretion. You guys are likely to see this as unfortunate, yet a violation is a violation. My wife and I are pretty clear-eyed about our chances today. We understand that, you know, any legal facts of this case are outside of y'all's purview and perhaps irrelevant to your decision-making, but we also hope that it's within your purview to afford our family your understanding and empathy, and that this too may inform your decision today. Overall, we beseech you guys not to judge us too harshly for being deceived by our contractor and underprized through your agency. While our expansion is only a dormer that does not increase the home's footprint, likely, you know, a relatively minor project in the commission's experience, it required all of our savings on top of the drawn equity. So further cosmetic construction fixes ruled on by your commission, fixes that much more easily could have been addressed if we were provided the June notice, fixes that are estimated by other contractors to cost around that $19,885 figure, those changes would stretch my family to our financial breaking point. And that is pretty much all I had to say. I had some slides. This is just from ePermits, the documented days of possible inspection, again, by Mr. Zahn, and perhaps he could speak to, but these are dates that we did not, we were never notified. So that kind of concludes what I had to say. I also have on the slides a few from here, oh, that was Alex Hayes. This is my contact with Mr. Hayes, where I had emailed asking him if he could provide me some information regarding the stop work order. And then the next email is, oh, that's my phone tag. I could have taken that slide out, but, and the next slide, this is the email back from Mr. Hayes, saying that he was unable to find the picture that he usually takes to document stop work orders. And then the next slide is, that is June, I believe, June 3. And then, so that kind of gives you a rough estimate of where the construction process was on the date of that filed complaint. The next slide is, I believe, June 13. Sorry for that. I'm in a public school. And then the final slide is the June 4. So you can see by June 4, the construction was complete. And again, we received notice for the first time on June 2. So that's all my input thus far.
Okay. Mr. Spencer, thank you for your explanation, and we do sympathize in your dilemma, and we'll have some more discussion and may have you some more questions. But Ms. Ziegler, have we had any public comment?
No, we haven't had any comment, and there are no callers.
Okay.
But I will add, if I could, a little background information, because this is a good opportunity to explain how the process works between the two different departments. According to Code, the only department that can issue a stop work order is Codes. So in cases where we need one, we will contact them, and they'll go post it for us. In this case, I'm not sure if it was posted for us, or if it was something they noticed and posted for themselves. It is their practice, my understanding, it is their practice to get photographs, which they either didn't do in this case, or didn't actually issue the stop work order. According to CityWorks, which is our metro-wide permitting software, it was issued, but again, they don't have a photograph. Also, according to CityWorks, our inspector visited the site at least three times, but it's unclear whether or not he spoke to anyone. And Mr. Spencer is correct in that the letter from our department, so even if there's a stop work order issued, we will issue a letter of abatement, which in this case would have gone to the property owners because we didn't know who the contractor was, and that was not done for several months. So I do want to give you that information.
Okay. All right. Since we don't have any public comment, we will close public hearing. And commissioners, we go into discussion. Question to staff? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, thank you, Chair. You know, after reading, you know, in our packet, looking over this information, you know, these are always so difficult, and again, you know, as we all know, I've voted many times to have people, you know, take off what they've done, you know, not retroactively ask for permission, but I've been persuaded, and I, you know, due to the fact, I know that Metro Codes, working with them every day, they're working from home, a lot of things are truly just not getting done. There is no picture of the stop work order. It's such a, to me, I know, if it breaks the rules, breaks the rules, but it just seems it's such a small, you know, thing, a foot or two, you know, on the sides, and I realize that is the, I realize that is the rule, and we really try to stick by those, but in this instance, again, there are community and neighbors for it in our packet. You know, it's not a huge addition that's out of line. It's a small dormer, and I'm inclined, just due to these reasons, that, you know, we're unsure if they were notified correctly. We are, you know, I'm just, I'm inclined to have them keep it. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. I'm going to go to Commissioner Johnson next, and then I'll take the others.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Commissioner Johnson. From the series of dates and actions, I am not sure if I can confidently follow Metro did what it's supposed to do. So in this case, yes, the violation was discovered, and according to the CityWorks, the stop work order is supposed to be issued, but unfortunately, there's no proof to regular procedure was followed, no homeowner was properly notified. So I too agree with the sentiment expressed by Commissioner Jones. I don't like to, you know, just give forgiveness, but in this case, I cannot confidently say Metro did what we're supposed to do. So in that case, homeowner was probably not procedurally correctly notified, so I am inclined to go against our staff recommendation and allow this addition to stay as is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mosley?
I don't have any, I won't repeat what's already been said. I am compelled by the arguments put forth by the applicant. I would like to note a couple of additional items for the record. In looking at the addition compared to the homes on either side of it, it doesn't, you know, contrast greatly, and while it may not meet the letter of the two-story addition by insetting two feet, I don't find- I don't find it to be jarring or that it is meaningful that it is within the existing footprint of the home. And while I think our preference would be that it would be inset two feet, we've, I feel like putting, because of the nature of procedure and the stress that COVID-19 has put on Metro's notification system, that by requiring at this point, based on the facts presented by the applicant, to reconstruct this addition inset by two feet, would be putting a financial obligation on them that would not have been the case had the notices been posted per the testimony given by the applicant, which is punitive, unnecessarily punitive, and is unlike other cases, which makes this unique.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, as I look at this project, I see that it truly is a unique project, unlike some of the more clear-cut violations that we see. And clearly, the processes have not been documented, and we aren't sure that things were done on Metro's side as well as certainly not by the contractor. And I think that even though it's not inset two feet, the wide overhang on the existing structure and the narrow overhang on the dormer tends to alleviate some of the problems that we see with structures that do go out to the far edges. So based on that and what the other commissioners have said, I'd like to move that we approve this dormer as constructed.
Okay. Commissioner Fitz? There is a motion, however, we can discuss it after the motion. So there is a motion on, okay. Commissioner Mahal?
I'd like to second Cyril's motion.
Okay, there's a first, there's a second. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Fitz?
Um, yes, I just, I wanted to note, I agree with the, I guess, with the addition being on the back of the structure and the comments about the, you know, it's inset from the, from the, there's a large overhang for the eaves. I guess I just wanted to make the comment that I'm not sure, to me, that the timing of when, when things were communicated necessarily affects my decision on this. I think, you know, I know that inspections are made throughout the process, but oftentimes projects are kind of well beyond the point where it makes it easy to make those necessary revisions, and we don't necessarily take that into concern. The project is not in compliance regardless of when the applicant is notified. So to me, the timing of that is not really of concern. To me, it's, would we make an exception? And in that case, I do agree that we could make an exception here, but I don't think the timing of the notifications should play into it. Thanks.
Duly noted. And thank you for clarifying that because it, we do need to be really clear on how we have our voting decisions on this. So Vice Chair has made a motion in the second by Commissioner Mahal, and I will take roll and say yes or no. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Spencer, thank you again for your explanation. Okay, now it's time for the public to call into the next project, which is 610 Russell. Actually, it's a violation. Yes, sorry. 610 Russell Street, and that number is 629-255-1911. And Mr. Alexander will present our project.
Okay, this is Sean Alexander with MHCC staff. This, at 610 Russell Street. On July 27th of this year, MHCC staff observed work being undertaken without a preservation permit and without building permits. The work included construction of an addition at the rear of the building and removal of the historic windows. Staff contacted the homeowner and requested a work order from Metro Codes. I have seen and photographed that stop-work order posted on the door. Staff has sent, issued a permit for replacing the windows, and we've told the contractor, the owner, that interior work does not need our approval to resume, although building codes may, or building permits may be required. The applicant has been in communication with us about submitting an application to proceed with the addition. And so far, they have submitted floor plans and a front elevation, but not a site plan and not rear or side elevations, which would also be required to review an addition. As it has been built to this point, the addition is stepped in two feet from the right side of the house, as has always been required of two-story additions. The left side of the addition is not stepped in, it's just in about the width of the material Staff recommends approval of the proposed addition with the conditions that the addition is inset two feet from each side at the rear of the historic structure, that the applicant submits a complete application, including site plan, floor plans, and all elevations for review by MHCC staff. With the possibility of returning to the commission if setback determination is needed within 30 days of your decision, that all materials are approved prior to purchase and installation, that HVAC and other utilities are located on the rear or beyond the midpoint of the house. And with those conditions, and then assuming no encroachments or setback issues, staff finds that the proposed new construction will meet Section 3B of the Edgefield Historic Preservation, zoning overlay design guidelines.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alexander. Do we have any public comment or call-in?
No public comment.
Okay, neither call-in or public comment? Oh, is the applicant on the line? Okay. Do not see, I do not see any hand raised on public side. Okay. All right, so we will close public hearing. And commissioners, for discussion. Vice Chair, do you have your hand raised for this project?
No, I don't have a raise for this project, but I think that the staff recommendation and the report was sufficient information for me to make a motion when other commissioners have completed any comments that they have.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, do we have any further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I'm in favor of the staff recommendation, and therefore, I'll just go ahead and make a motion regarding 610 Russell Street to accept staff recommendation of the approval of the project with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Okay. Vice Chair Stewart?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Thank you, there's a first and a second, and we will now take roll call. Okay. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams? Thank you. Our next project is 4909 Elkins Avenue, and the number to call in for the public is And Ms. Ziegler and Ms. Baldock will be presenting the project.
Thanks, this is Robin Ziegler. And actually, Jenny Warren will be presenting the second half. Sorry for that confusion. First, for the benefit of the public, I'd like to take a moment to talk to you about the staff report. I think the public often thinks of the staff report as representative of the commission's decision, or even one side of a two-sided argument. But as you know, it's just one of multiple tools you use to make a decision. The report is staff's analysis and summary of the project written without the benefit of the additional tools that are available to you, such as public input and the experiences and background of commission members. In this particular case, the applicant did a really great job of providing a very complete and thorough application, which we greatly appreciate, and I'm sure you do too. However, it does still leave us with some questions. I'd also like to comment about the claim that the building isn't historic that was made last month, because it was only constructed as worker housing and doesn't have any architectural details. Our built environment is important because it is a tangible reminder and educator about our past, which is one of the many reasons we all do the work we do to preserve our historic buildings. But our history isn't just revealed in high-styled buildings. The people who built our city are often represented in what we call worker housing, and their stories are as important as the homes of the more affluent. This house retains its original form and design, albeit very simple. Ultimately, in this case, the basis for the building as a historic building is irrelevant, as the applicant did not apply for demo based on the argument that the building's not historic, but rather applied with an economic hardship argument. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Warren to provide a summary of staff's analysis.
Okay. This is Jenny Warren. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, okay. The applicant requests demolition of 4909 Elkins Avenue, arguing for economic hardship. The Horace H. Hooper House is a contributing building in the Park and Elkins overlay, built around 1925. Since it is the commission's primary goal to ensure the preservation of historic buildings, demolition requests are reviewed by staff in detail, providing not only an analysis of the information given, but an analysis of what questions remain. It is the responsibility of the applicant to prove hardship rather than for staff to disprove hardship. In this case, the building is currently occupied and functioning as a family home, and staff found that the estimates provided were unclear, did not necessarily match the engineer reports, and included unnecessary costs. Both engineer reports agreed that the foundation needs to be replaced. The Rhodes report adds that the roof and porch need to be replaced. Based on multiple inspections, staff agrees that these three features need to be replaced or will require significant rehab. The Rhodes report also notes that the most of the interior was in good condition, specifically noting that the second floor was in good condition, with an exception of some ceiling water damage on the first floor midway back. But the estimates from that same report appear to be full replacement of all elements of the house. It is also unclear if estimates for framing and new drywall are full replacements or repairs. For instance, is the drywall estimate only to repair the ceiling water damage or to replace all drywall? If all drywall, no evidence was provided to illustrate that all drywall needs to be repaired. There is no evidence provided to prove that expenses related to replacement windows, electrical systems, plumbing systems, new insulation and drywall, replacement of interior and exterior doors and hardware, replacement of interior trim, and replacement bathroom hardware and fixtures are necessary to make the building habitable and provide a reasonable return. So this was not available for staff to include in its analysis. Expenses such as new cabinets and countertops, wood and tile flooring, closet shelving, mirrors, appliances, and a security system, which were not noted in the engineering reports but included in the construction estimates, were also not included in staff's analysis because they are not necessary to make a building habitable and ensure a reasonable return. In addition, the Rhodes report says the house will need exterior wall improvements before the proposed addition in the rear can be loaded on the exterior foundation walls. An addition is not required to make the house habitable and repairable. Staff recommends disapproval of the application for full demolition, finding that there is a reasonable use of the property with proper repairs. And the applicant has failed to demonstrate that there would not be a reasonable return for the property as a residence once repaired. Accordingly, the proposed demolition meets Section 3B-1 for inappropriate demolition, as it is a historic building and it does not meet Section 17.40.420D for economic hardship, as there is a reasonable use for the property.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Any public calls and or public comments?
Okay. We do have some public comments.
Okay. Should we listen to applicant first, or?
Yes, applicant first, and then Jenny will read the public comments.
Okay. So the applicant is on the line, and please raise your hand on who would like to speak Okay. Is that Ms. Lynn Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, hi, I'm Lynn Taylor. I'm the residential designer and the applicant. Thank you for your time today in reviewing this. I know it was a lot of paperwork. I hope you've had time to look at the comments and rebuttal that we presented on October 20th, comparing some of the things that were inconsistent in the recommendations by staff, and also some things that were kind of ignored. They keep talking about the Rhodes engineering report, which I have admitted is muddled because he has looked at drawings that were based on some other things, additions like the dormer, which we took out. They don't, they barely mentioned the Basset engineering report, and he's the same engineer of report that's done other projects and stuff in the city. Also too, they did not treat this application the same as they did at 4709, which they averaged all three of the bids, and they did not nitpick out the drywall and the different things like that. So I hope you've had time to compare both, because you can see how they treated and looked at each one of these differently. And the other thing is, the state architect, Ann McGarren, is letters, she submitted two letters about this project. Once this project, if ever renovated, will have to become a huge house, and this homeowner only wants to have a small house. And the staff has recommended that they add on to the house, expand it. You'd have to double the size of it to get your money out of this house, and this client doesn't want to do that, cannot afford to do that. And this is why we don't have small houses, is because everybody takes them and strips them down, like the photograph I put, because they're very difficult to work on. And if you're in construction, you know these materials have deteriorated over the years. So this to us is proven economic hardship based on what we've submitted and if you have looked at it. Please ask me any questions that you would have on this project, and I'll turn it over to Sandy, the homeowner.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Hi, this is Sandy Moss. I hope you can hear me?
We can, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again, especially for granting a deferral to go over the extensive submittal from last time. Indeed, I've spent countless hours and tens of thousands of dollars to get to this point, so your careful consideration is very much appreciated. The goal for us in our house has always been, we love it, and we want to stay in place with updates to make this wheelchair-friendly, so that my husband and I can age here in place. This is a neighborhood we've come to cherish, especially during this time of COVID. However, after exploring many options and consulting numerous professionals, the conclusion that we've reached is that the only thing that makes financial sense is to completely replace the home, thus our application on economic hardship. I have a few comments on the staff and their language. I am not going to pick that apart, as I know that they have spent a great deal of time looking over our application. I would note that in- I would note that in the cover letter for our, the staff's recommendation, that Section O, which are titles provided by the applicant, referring to myself in the third person, just like Elmo, that those were omitted. So you should have received those as part of our Tuesday resubmission. It seems that the staff has taken the lowest bid, which is the MCR, and then parsed that apart, simply going to the few recommendations that they've taken out of the structural engineering report, which I think is fair enough. However, in the process of doing that, it seems that the MCR bid is wildly optimistic in terms of being able to make the quote "necessary repairs" for $150,000, I would or change, you know, around there. I would also posit that that is not enough for either the Fairhead or Wilson post-rehab value. So if nothing else, that should be taken into consideration. I would, also, it hurts my heart that the language they've used is drawn largely from professional journals and articles in their field, which once again I appreciate, but they're saying that I have quote "reasonable use of the house," which in no, nowhere does that appear in Metro Codes or the Park Elkins overlay.
Ms. Moss? You have three minutes. Just wanted to give you a timeline.
Then I will wrap it up. I would just say that in the 4709 analysis, Chrissy Wilson has a letter saying that the resident at 4709 cries uncontrollably because her home, they could not afford the fines, and she did not want to leave. And I would posit that if, if all, if all we're going to do is take 150, which is the gross, you know, which is a great deal of our budget, that I'm going to be the one crying 20 years from now because that budget will largely be gone, and the maintenance, like structural maintenance to keep this up will be gone. Anyway, on to Sean Henry.
And I believe you have three minutes.
Sean, are you on the line?
I see, I see his hand raised. He might be just delayed, so we will patiently wait.
Here we go, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Henry.
Fantastic. Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. I'll make it very quick because we certainly would like to retain a few minutes for rebuttal. Let me just say again, reasonable use of the property as a residence has no bearing in your consideration of the demolition criteria. The only place reasonable use appears anywhere in any text is actually in Rule Number Nine of your Rules of Order and Procedure, where the term residential is defined to mean residential use, and that's only in the context of structures that were constructed before 1865. So just very quick background on that. In 1989, the state of Tennessee enacted legislation that allowed a legislative body to determine and evaluate the demolition of a structure that was older, you know, that was constructed prior to 1865. And in 2006, the Metro Council designated you as the board to make those determinations. And then as, I guess to help you evaluate those, again, pre-1865, you adopted this term of residential use, reasonable use, and this building, this Moss building, was not constructed prior to 1865. So reasonable use has no bearing whatsoever. The real issue here for you to be consistent with how you've looked at this in other situations, particularly at 4709 Elkins Avenue, is to compare the rehabilitation cost to the market value, and the net effect here for Ms. Moss is that she will sustain a net loss, and that net loss is an average of about $71,000. And her home is 1,000 square feet smaller than what was approved for demolition at 4709 Elkins, where their net loss was an average of about $60,000.
32.
So within a year's timeframe, with properties who are similarly, that are similarly situated, we've got two different analyses that have taken place in really a year's time. We're simply asking this commission to be consistent with how you apply the criteria and be consistent with looking at the evaluation of costs, the comparison of rehab costs, the market value, and trust the experts.
Mr. Henry?
Yes, ma'am.
You might want to finish your sentence, or your time is up?
Just, just listen to the experts, and the experts have said that the only way to attempt to safe and code compliant rehabilitation is to gut this structure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. All right, do we have public comment then?
Yes, Ms. Warren, are you available to read the public comment?
I am. I have a letter from Anne McGarren at 4910 Elkins Avenue, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. It reads, "To Nashville Historical Commission, I would like this letter read into the record of the meeting since I am unable to attend due to another commission meeting. My name is Anne McGarren, and I live across the street from the property in question with my husband Nick McGarren. We have lived at 4910 Elkins Avenue since 1994. During the years that we have spent raising our family and restoring our home, we have also been friends with the three different owners of 4909 Elkins Avenue and have watched it evolve from an owner-renter duplex to the single-family home it is today. I am also an architect and currently serve as the state architect for Tennessee. First, many thanks to the Historical Commission staff and for their work on evaluating this project. I appreciate that they are not charged with finding reasons for demolishing a contributing structure, but rather saving them regardless of the economics. During last month's meeting, they recognized that many structural issues with this home. I can attest to the fact that this structure has reached the end of its useful life. The house does not have good bones, its foundations lacking, and few, if any, of the original features of the home still remain. It is unclear what period this house should be restored to at this point in its history. There are not any architectural characteristics worth saving. The foundation is wood posts with a single width of brick skirting that encloses the crawl space. The siding is asbestos, and most of the wood on the porch needs to be replaced, as do the windows and the roof. The residence of Charles Fulmer and Sandy Moss was originally built as affordable workforce housing and was not built to the same quality standards as other homes which were built by affluent families from the late 1800s through the 1950s. Sometimes, structures reach the end of their useful life, and that is the case with this house. The main characteristic worth salvaging is that it was built as affordable housing, and the size and scale of this home adds diversity to the street and overall neighborhood. Southern Park is a neighborhood of many eras and architectural styles. It is a very diverse neighborhood with perfectly scaled homes for singles, couples, families, and retirees of a variety of economic situations. The 49 to 50 block of Elkins Avenue reflects that variety in the type and scale of homes and the variety of family units that occupy them. Sandy and Charles embrace that diversity and truly appreciate the scale of their home within the overall fabric. They would love to renovate their home, but sadly, that is not a financially feasible solution, so they want to simply replace their house with a structure of similar scale and architectural character. They want to create a home that they can live in comfortably for many years to come. They want to create a house that can be passed on to the next generation for them to create their own memories of family and community. That's the Nashville Historical Commission." Yes?
That's time.
Okay.
But this is Robin Ziegler, but I do want to point out that that letter was received by all the commissioners as well.
Okay. Any other public comment or phone call? Okay. The applicant has maxed the 10 minutes and also the letter, so we will close the public hearing. And now for discussion with commissioners. And also again, want to thank the applicant and your team for presentation. Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, as I do have to say, I think this application for the staff report of 150 pages has to hit any record that I've seen for the length of the analysis and the reports. Commend the staff on their thorough analysis and arguments to put all this together. Despite all that, when, you know, and I was one of the commissioners that walked through this house before, when we heard this earlier. And however, as I go through all the analysis, and then I just sort of step back and think about this, it seems like, you know, it's pretty clear the foundation needs to be replaced. We've heard the roof needs to be replaced, that the porch needs to be replaced. In my observation of it, there had not been any maintenance of gutters, eve lines, windows, and of course, it's asbestos siding on the outside. There was further information about a report of a ceiling beam going across the house that had to be replaced and other work as well. You know, when I look at the size of this house and I think about the amount of work that's going to need to be done on this house, when you're replacing the bottom and the top and a lot of things around the edges, I'm not sure it's worth retrieving. And so I really question whether this house, whether we need to deny the demolition permit for this.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do appreciate all the detailed information provided by applicant as well as staff. So I understand as a planning commissioners, our mission is try to preserve historical structure, but at the same time, I believe we have to think of the homeowner's safety and as well as bottom. So to me, I was reading. Understand this.
Commissioner?
Thinking about growing older and, you know, wheelchair accessible.
Commissioner, you're breaking up.
Okay.
Please just maybe back up on a couple of your sentences, and we will try to hear you again.
Okay. So let me go back. So I will start. So my thinking is, would it be fair for us to ask homeowners just continue to live in that current condition and force rehab just because the current condition of the house is fair and livable? So I've been thinking a lot about homeowner's right as well as our mission to preserve historical structure and neighborhood character and so forth. And I believe one of the homeowner's right, especially the person who living in historical neighborhood, is ability to expand. You know, many application, we as a commissioner approve rear addition or side addition or a dormer, whatever the case might be, to accommodate homeowner's needs, and I believe that's a right. But in this particular house, with this current condition, especially foundation needs significant work to be safe, so that is a quite financial burden to me. And so to deny this demolition, to me, it really demonstrate it has hardship, burden to the homeowner. And also, I understand this demolition is based on financial hardship, but if we were to, I'm finding demolition is appropriate because exterior, not only foundation, but exterior, many portion is deteriorated because over the years of lack of TLC, I believe. So they need a significant exterior repair as well. So in this case, I think it means demolition is appropriate, you know, Section 2A, more historically appropriate visual effect in the district by allowing demolition and by allowing appropriate new structure in that neighborhood. So I am inclined to support applicant, and I think we can find this demolition request meet our requirement of the hardship. And I'm listening to more experienced commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
Sure, just to add to that, I'm also in agreement with the comments that Commissioners Stewart and Johnson have just made after reviewing a lot of the reports. And again, extensive work was done by both the applicant's team and our, you know, MHCC staff that's very much appreciated. After, you know, just looking at some of the numbers and all that information, reading through and thinking again, just how Commissioner Johnson said a little more holistically about this project in particular, you know, I'm also inclined to support the applicant's wishes. So.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Vice Chair Stewart?
With no other commissioners appearing to be speaking, and based on what the other commissioners have said, I would make a motion to approve the applicant's request for demolition.
There's a motion, is there a second? Commissioner, Commissioner Williams?
I second the motion.
Okay, there's a first, there's a, and a second. Is there any other discussion before I take the roll? Okay? And please say yes or no when I call your name, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhall?
No.
Commissioner Mayhall, say that one more time, please.
No, no.
Okay. Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. Just want to, this is Vice, this is Chair Bell, and just to, we, both the applicant and MHCC staff, which we have commented already, but these are very serious and deliberating projects that we all go through, and as we know that the applicant has worked for quite a bit with the, with the staff, and again, looking at the details, you know, there's, we just don't take these very lightly. So for public to hear how we debate and how we discuss these things, it's important. And our charge as a commission is to preserve as much as we can in terms of historical nature and structural. So again, this has been a pretty long and hard decisions to make. And again, we thank you both, and we will move on to the next project. And let's see, 616 Fallowland has been deferred, and we will now move on to 801 Russell. Go to my notes here. Okay, 801 Russell. Where is my 801 Russell? Okay, there it is. Okay. For the public to call in, the number is 629-255-1911, and Mr. Alexander will present the project.
Okay, this is Sean Alexander, again, with MHCC staff. This application is a request to construct multiple substantial additions to a non-contributing commercial building, including an attached outbuilding. Although portions of the existing building would remain, the end result is essentially a new building. The proposal requires a setback determination on the right side and rear. The existing footprint of the building, Melissa, can you hit advance? It'll animate a little bit. All right, the existing building shown in gray will be retained, and then it will have two-story additions constructed on the front and rear. Hit next again. Yeah. So the front and rear additions shown in blue, with a garage component at the very rear, shown in green, connected by a porch, which is in red, and a covered walkway in yellow. Melissa, just hit one more time, just to clear the colors. Okay. So there's a lot going on there, so I thought that might, might help to show the colors. The covered walkway would cross the property line to the right, which is the top of that screen, would cross the property line and attach to an existing brick wall on the adjacent property. Codes does not permit structures to cross property, property lines, and this does not meet the five-foot setback requirement. Staff recommends that that walkway is eliminated. Also, because the porch between the primary mass of the building and the garage is fairly substantial, around 400 square feet, with a roof and at least one wall, staff, sorry, essentially that makes the garage an attached garage, and as part of the primary building, the building overall does not meet the five-foot setback from the right side, and it does not meet the 20-foot rear setback requirement from the alley. Also, that with the 400 square feet of the porch, the total structure covers 48% of the lot, which exceeds the maximum permitted 45% lot coverage. Staff also recommends eliminating the covered porch so that the house meets the right side and rear setbacks, and does not exceed the allowed maximum lot coverage. Even with the porch eliminated, the garage component itself would have a three-foot side setback, which encroaches on the five-foot setback that is required for garages larger than 700 square feet. So staff recommends that the outbuilding component is detached, as I said, and also to meet the five-foot setback requirement. With those changes, the width of the building, the setbacks, the front setback of the primary building component would be compatible with the surrounding context. The one-story commercial buildings form, yeah, there we go, will be largely retained. You can see it in dashed lines there. The one-story form will be retained with two-story gabled components added to the front and to the rear, with a flat roof section, second story added between them. The front gable ridge of the front component will be 35 feet, six inches tall, above grade, and that height is compatible with the historic context. There will also be a flat roof component in the very front, which is to the right side of that image. It's designed to read as a single-story front porch, but actually, it does have an enclosed space above the porch itself. So it's two stories, but designed to read as a single story. The primary wall material of the existing building is brick, and the primary material of the addition will also be brick. Staff recommends that the color of the brick shall be red, per the guidelines, and that if it is to be painted, that the color be red. The front porch component is a board-formed concrete with pigment added to a portion of it, the bottom, two, two and a half, three feet or so, to indicate a reference of a foundation line. It will all be one material, but with a hint of a material change. And staff finds that appropriate, and just asks to approve the material colors. Onto the right side elevation, portions of the building's primary elevations will be clad with a vertical glass plank siding, mostly on the front porch component for that, and also vertical wood siding. Glass siding is not present in the district, but it may be, but it is a contemporary material that staff finds may be appropriate for a building to read of its time. Staff does ask to see samples of the material prior to construction. Wood siding is common in the districts, but only in horizontal orientation. Staff recommends horizontal wood siding or another type of cladding material that's already found in the neighborhood be used instead of vertical siding. Other materials on this elevation and the front and sides are stucco, there's metal roofing and a metal chimney cladding, metal porch railings. Staff finds those to be appropriate, and asks to review the colors. The window proportion and rhythms are contemporary, but they're compatible with the general rhythms of historic houses nearby, and there are no large wall expanses, expanses without any openings. Staff finds to be appropriate. There's front elevation, sort of the same materials. If you have any questions, let me know. I think it, elevation probably speaks for itself better than I could. And then the rear elevation, and then elevations for the garage component. The materials of the garage match those of the house, some of which need to have color and texture approved. And then you can see the attached porch between the house and garage there. With the exception of the porch that attaches the garage to the house, and that the side setback for a garage needs to be five feet, garage meets the design guidelines for Edgefield. And then my last image there is the architect's rendering of the project. Staff recommends approval of the new project with the following conditions: that the covered porch between the primary building and garage is eliminated so that the outbuilding is not attached, that there is 20 feet of space between the primary building and the outbuilding, that the garage meets the minimum five-foot setback requirement on the right side of the property, that the covered walkway on the right side is eliminated so that the primary building completely meets the five-foot setback on the right side, and that the material selections are approved by MHCC staff prior to installation, including that the brick is red, and if painted, the color is red, that a more typical type of cladding than vertical siding is used, that the roof color is approved, that additional information is provided on the glass plank, metal chimney, and metal railings, and that the utilities and location of any appurtenances is reviewed prior to purchase and installation. And with those conditions, staff finds that this project meets the Edgefield Design Guidelines. I believe you've received an email, maybe two emails, in favor of the project that were forwarded to you. And I believe the architect is on the line if you have any questions. I can try to answer questions, too.
Okay. It's a robust project, Mr. Alexander. Thank you. We'll give time for the public to call in. And also, is the applicant or representative on the line? Please announce yourself.
Yes, this is Brad Norris, I'm the architect. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Yeah, I think we're all excited about the project. I really want to thank the Historic Commission for working with us on this and being in support of it, and really even expressing excitement about seeing something of a modern style that fits into the historic fabric of neighborhood. I also want to thank, as you mentioned, the letters from the neighbors who have expressed overwhelming support for this as well, the neighbor across the streets. Looking forward to seeing something exciting to look at. A little bit of history, so like 17 years ago, Ben and Julie Sistrunk bought this commercial building, and it was really the ugly duckling in the neighborhood. It was a peach and black randomly patterned building with a brown chingled man-starred roof on top of it. And it quickly transformed it into something a little bit more acceptable by removing that roof and painting the brick black and making it more interesting to the neighborhood. And then they added some modern art in the, in the yard for the neighbors to enjoy, and quickly, the house then became sort of a landmark for the neighborhood. It's often referred to as the Art House. Ben and Julie have been longtime members of the neighborhood, and they intend to stay there even longer. We've worked really hard to develop the design, adding to the existing non-conforming building in such a way that will enhance the neighborhood with this modern style, using, you know, proportion, scale, and historic forms to really make it, make it fit, and it also work with its, its, its more modern direction. The staff, again, has done a great job recognizing the contemporary interpretations of the more traditional elements that we've, that we've worked with on this. And for the most part, they've approved the design as it is. As Sean mentioned, there are, of course, some conditions, and I'd like to really just jump to those and address those one by one. The covered porch between the primary building and the garage, they've asked for that to be eliminated. We are willing to take off the, the, the tall chimney and the wall on the backside of it, and reduce the size of it so that the overall coverage of the building will fit within the 45%. As I understand from Sean, Sean, he did say that when we mentioned those things, that that would certainly help. So I would ask that we approve still having a covered area back there, but with those modifications to help it. So, and by eliminating that wall and the, and the fireplace, you'll be able to see through this and clearly see that they are two separate structures. Number two, the, so, and in doing that, we would maintain the, for number two, the 20-foot open space between the primary building and the outbuilding. Number three, garage is, it meets the minimum five-foot setback on the right side of property. So there is an existing wall on the neighbor's property that is two feet inside of their property, and that neighbor has had no problem and agrees with the Sistrunks using that two feet of his property that's now on their property effectively. The, the garage is five feet from that wall. The length of the garage is set so that we can have a three-car garage, and the west side of the opposite side is up against one of the large sculptures they have that really can't be moved. So to make the garage functional, we need that length, and we need that extra two feet that we've encroached into the setback. Visually, we've, and functionally, we've got a five-foot setback from the wall. So I would ask that you approve that pending approval of that encroachment by codes and zoning, recognizing that this, it's a, it's really a functional five-foot setback. And if they'll approve it, then I would ask if you guys approve it as well. So number four, the covered walkway on the right side, that's, that's the same side of the building we were just talking about. We agree we'll remove that, no problem. That's easy to address. And then number five, we get to the materials. The, there is two big issues for us here. One is the brick color, and they've asked for it to be red. As I said, the original color of the, of the structure was kind of a peach and black random patterned brick. It was truly ugly. So they painted it the color it is now, this dark gray color, 17 years ago, and it's been that way for 17 years. So there's, there's some, some precedent in, in the house itself. In the addition, we are just merely extending this brick into the house, and we're just adding to it and taking what's there and extending it along the base. I would argue that it is not really the primary material of the building. And so therefore, it, if you, if we paint that red, then suddenly, it becomes, it becomes primary just by its color, and really can become a rather jarring contrast, I think, to the rest of the house and make it stand out, and, and not be in harmony with the rest of the, of the design. The design guidelines refer to painted brick colors matching the original color of the underlying brick. And my understanding of that is the, is to interpret that as in the, the painted brick colors should be a natural brick color, as opposed to something like, well, the blue house across the street. The current color of the house, that dark brick, is actually close to a natural black brick. There are black bricks out there, and as a matter of fact, there was a black brick as part of the original house. When considering context in the neighborhood, there exists a variety of brick colors throughout the neighborhood, from gray to blue, there's even another house that has the same color that we're proposing to use here. So I'd ask you to consider that context as, as well. So that's, those are my thoughts on the, on the brick color. I really think that the harmony and, and working with the, with the overall design of the house, that the, the red brick is going to be a serious problem if we're forced to do that. Then the next one is the siding. As, as the architect designer of this house, I really feel that the brick siding is, is the best solution for this. It enhances and harmonizes the lines of the house, it fits well with the contemporary design, and it is a wood siding. I understand that it's unusual for the neighborhood, and it does kind of stretch the limits of the contemporary interpretation of a, maybe a Horton Madden or something. Yeah, it's absolutely necessary that we not be allowed to do that, and we can have a discussion about possible solutions that are really asking to consider keeping that as it is. Our sea roof color, we'll definitely work with staff on that. We will provide the requested information on the other materials and so forth, and definitely work with staff on locating utilities and all those items. I, I think you also have the letters from the neighbors that are strongly in support of this, and strongly in support of the brick color that we've talked about, and the siding. If, I don't know if I need to read those letters or not, if anybody has them, but if, if I need to, let me know, otherwise, I will conclude with that and take any comments or questions anybody may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Norris. We will be probably reading some of those public comments. How many minutes has he left for rebuttal? Okay.
What an hour.
Doesn't matter. Okay. Again, there's, there's a lot of details on this project, so we may have some more questions for you, Mr. Norris. Ms. Ziegler, any public comment?
Yes, as Mr. Norris noted, there are two emails. The first one is from Lois Lane. The Sistrunks' existing house has provided a modern and unique contrast to the historic homes in the 800 block of Russell Street. It contributes to the character of the neighborhood. The proposed construction continues in that tradition and will be an asset to the neighborhood. The home should have the appropriate scale and setbacks and be constructed of quality materials. It appears to meet the appropriate guidelines with some modifications recommended by staff. However, because of the proposed, because of the proposed home is a contemporary design, and because it is a non-contributing infill construction, the construction shouldn't be expected to adhere to some of the usual style guidelines. Because it is a unique style for the neighborhood, it may be difficult to reach consensus on exactly which design guidelines should be applied. I urge you to approve the proposed choices of materials and colors for the home. The colors and materials were chosen to work together to enhance the overall contemporary design. Making a change- Making a change in the color of the brick to red, for example, would detract from the coherence of the overall design. The house would look like it had been designed by a committee, or the change might trigger a cascade of other color and design changes in an attempt to restore design's integrity. The eight hundred block of Russell has red brick homes, but it also has homes built of light-colored stone and of dark brick, as well as a couple colorfully painted homes. I believe the proposed colors for the new Sistrunk home will be compatible with the other homes on the block. I'm looking forward to seeing this home at the end of my block. It is going to stimulate some discussions as have all the contemporary homes in historic Edgefield. I believe it will be welcome addition to my block and an asset to the neighborhood. I appreciate all the work the MHCC commissioners and staff do to preserve our little residential and historic neighborhood. The next email is from Carol Williams. She writes, "Living at eight hundred Russell, I'm pleased with the new modern plan for across the street at eight oh one Russell. This non-conforming property deserves a chance to enter 2020 with a new creative architectural design while at the same time following our historic guidelines. The guidelines are set but need to relate to the modern design so as not to decimate the creative plan. It appears to comply without copying. That is why I love it. I'm asking for your approval of the Sistrunks' plan. They want to save their non-conforming home, which is previously the training center for the blind, and are willing to invest what it takes to stay in the neighborhood. The architect has created a beautiful modern plan, what some may have thought impossible, adding to the variety of historic homes in the eight hundred block of Russell. What a fun history at eight oh one Russell, from the Outh Manor home, I'm not sure the pronunciation of that, forward to present and hopefully future. I appreciate you all and am thankful for your service to Historic Edgefield over the years. And I don't believe there are any callers."
Okay. All right. I think we've exhausted time for the applicant as well, but probably we'll have more questions. We will close public hearing. And commissioners, we will discuss, and I see Commissioner Mosley's hand is raised.
I've got a question for the architect and then maybe some follow-up by staff. Right on the vertical siding, I'm unconvinced that horizontal siding would yield something that's complementary to the form and the design. Of course, we haven't seen it yet, but when I think of horizontal siding, I'm curious about how edge conditions are treated and how that may or may not influence the design. It could be positive or it could be negative. So I'm preserving, I guess, a little judgment on what might be the best solution there to be in keeping with what modern details were, what is obviously a modern design would be appropriate. To that end, that also begs the question of, in the rendering and looking at some of those details where you have, you've indicated the form and it appears, I don't think that's a function of rendering, it's a function of stylistic choice, that the, quote-unquote, exterior faces or those facing outside the form are, look to be dark bronze or black? And then those to the interior are more of a natural wood finish. Can you talk a little bit about how corner details, how you intend to resolve corner details where siding comes together or turns a corner?
Well, with, if I understand your question correctly, with the vertical siding, yeah, it would simply be a mitered corner and would turn the corner. And to your comment, if it's horizontal, yeah, that becomes much more problematic, especially if it's a lap siding. Then we suddenly get into corner boards and trim around windows and much more, you know, the historic detailing, which would be extremely incompatible with everything that we've done.
Sure. And then getting into, when you transition from wall into gable eve detail, would you, how thick is that in the drawing? And does that roof thickness maintain, you know, like the thickness of the plane of the roof, does it maintain from the exterior all the way across? Or does it get deep and there's a trim detail and then it sort of shallows up behind that? In other words, would there be a couple of beams that are deeper at the end of the eve or would that eve condition read all the way back to the vertical windows in those voids in the sides? Do you follow what I'm asking there?
I, can you hear me?
I can, yep.
Yeah, okay. I think I follow you. So the thickness of the roof and the sidewalls that come down is all right around twelve inches. So there would be a single twelve-inch wide fascia material that would wrap all of that. And then that thickness, yes, carries all the way through even to the interior.
Gotcha. You've answered a question, which was, I was curious if there's a transition from the vertical siding to, you know, a more of a solid fascia? Or would you continue, like little small little pieces cut on the angle of wood siding making that eve condition there? But it sounds like that'd be a trim board.
Yes, yeah, it would be a trim board, yes.
I ask these questions because we see some half-baked contemporary designs that tend to fall apart in execution sometimes, just once they get out into the field of construction. And I think that, you know, it's important to understand intent and execution and this is obviously paying close attention to the details and.
Yeah, I certainly understand exactly what you're talking about. And I am one hundred percent committed to it not falling apart as we get into construction and really following those details through so that it's consistent and well-done, so.
And I'll, I know there's others who want to speak, so I'll get to my last question. It deals specifically with the brick color. You know, I think painted, painted brick, I'll weigh in on that part. I think painted brick is not a, while present in the neighborhood, is not something that we would encourage, and certainly when homes come for review, moving things back towards compliant, you know, whether it's agreed, everyone agrees with it or not, that in the natural shade of brick colors. I am compelled by arguments, and I think I have driven by and am aware of and know of some brick colors that are common in the neighborhood that approach a darker sort of wine or maroon color that I think gives some opportunity for approval and us to be consistent in doing that without making an exception to just a straight-up painted brick. I guess the other shelter that could be considered is if this, and I think you may have started leaning that direction a little bit, if this home in eighteen, nineteen years since it's been painted this color has gained some historic integrity by itself, that is an argument, I'm not sure how firm that argument would be, to allow a painted brick color that would essentially match that or be more in that dark bronze appearance.
Right. Well, I think I understand what you're saying. So you understand that the, that the original building, it is painted brick. And since we're just continuing and toothing it in together, we have to stay with a painted brick. We can't unpaint what was there. So we've got it, so we have to do painted. So, yeah, so, so given that, that is the question of color, yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. You don't want to go back to peach and black, so I, what's yours to, even if I picked something in a natural, you know, wine, deep wine or, you know, maroon color, found something that color-wise would match with something that was historic, the other brick would be painted as similar as that could be to match the brick and probably a poor imitation at that.
Right.
Thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll be now.
Okay. Commissioner Fitz.
Yeah, there's several different things going on here, so I'm gonna speak first, I think, to some of the massing components that the staff addressed and how we approach, how we approach projects and additions. So when it comes to the, I guess it's the porch that's connecting the primary building with the garage, I do agree with staff that that needs to be removed and that the twenty feet of open space would need to be maintained between the primary building and the outbuilding. I also was, I guess what's happening with the setback on the side, and I would also agree that the covered walkway needs to be removed. Just how we've approached other projects in the past and kind of what the guidelines state. With this being an addition to a, you know, non-contributing building type, when it comes to the vertical siding, I know in the past we've allowed vertical siding for additions because it helps distinguish between the historic character and the new addition of the building. And I could be, could be swayed and could actually be in favor if other commissioners supported that the siding, the siding, the vertical siding, I feel like there's precedent for, because this is, is an addition, although it's not an addition to an historic building. I think a case could be made for that. And then I think we're both the applicant and Commissioner Mosley, we're starting to go with the color of the building in the same sense, since the original building had been painted brick. You know, could, I can, I could see reason for this, for this to remain a painted brick that's similar based on the color of the existing structure. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the question to applicant, I think condition number two and space between primary building and outbuilding. And I think he sort of agreed, but I was not clear a hundred percent. I heard he agreed to remove some structure, but I did not hear he's agreed to be the open porch. So my understanding is, first of all, we need to reduce overall maximum lot coverage within forty-five percent. And I understand applicant is agreeable to that. To do that, I understand applicant is removing certain structure. But I did not completely hear applicant agreed eliminating covered porch. So could you talk about that, what is applicant is understanding and proposing?
Yes. So right now, we've got a large covered, this large covered area, and on the backside of it, there is a wall with sliding panels and a tall fireplace component that really ends up enclosing that space on three sides. So what we're proposing is that we remove that back wall, reduce the size of it so the overall coverage is within the forty-five percent. And the idea being that you can clearly see through this and clearly see that the main building and the garage are not connected by a conditioned space. And then one thing I did forget to mention is that the neighbor directly next door to us also has a garage that is connected by an enclosed breezeway, and it's only twelve feet apart. And their garage is within the twenty-foot setback. So there is contextual precedent for it, as well as another house across the alley that's based onto Woodland, they also have a garage that's fully connected with a conditioned space to their house. So we're not asking for something that's completely without precedent. But what we're, are trying to do is have a covered space that they can use as an outdoor space, but still make it clear that they are two separate buildings. And I think that's the overall intent and goal of it. That's what we're asking for. Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand. Thank you. So for that, I have a question to the staff. So that will be considered as not connected? So therefore, does it not require twenty-foot setback, but five-foot setback will be sufficient with this modification? If you, Alex, confirm that, that'd be great.
This is Sean Alexander. I can speak to that. Melissa, can you advance two slides that would be to the architect's first slide illustration? We have occasionally approved a breezeway between a building and a primary building and an outbuilding, but those have to be no wider than six feet and with open sides. Melissa, can you advance the slide there? Oh, it may be frozen. No, let's go the other, go the other direction. Yep, right there. So to the right is eight oh nine Russell, which is the adjacent house. And you can see there, it has a much narrower breezeway. That was approved in two thousand nine or ten, and it was, it's a, it's twelve feet long, but it's only eight or nine feet wide, which is, again, wider than we would even approve today. We do occasionally allow covered walkways, again, with open sides. The one that's proposed is twenty feet wide by twenty feet deep, so it's much larger than that. And it's, it's not, it's not without merit to reduce the massing by removing the chimney and the sliding wall, but it's still four hundred square feet of roof. Again, we would allow that to be a breezeway, that we're just a narrow covered walkway essentially on the property, not extending over the property. The left of those two images, that's the other example mentioned of essentially an attached garage, which it is, but it's, I mean, it's, the house is constructed in around the year eighteen hundred. The two wings on the sides were added in eighteen twenty, and then the clavard siding, it was a log structure, the clavard was added in eighteen twenty-five. There was no garage at the time, and it was essentially set back very far on the lot. I don't even know if there was an alley behind at the time, certainly before much of the neighborhood was platted. So it's sort of in a, just a different conversation altogether in terms of what that does or does not set as a precedent.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, that's the feeling I got, sounded like still maybe wall removed, but still kind of interpreted as connected. So therefore, you know, setback requirement and, you know, may not completely meet. Okay. So as far as side sidewalk or walkway, I understand this, you know, existing brick wall is outside of the property line. And so therefore, it's already, if we try to connect to that existing wall, it will be permanently encroaching, and, you know, we do not have authority to approve that. So I am totally in agreement of removing the covered walkway that, you know, have to meet. However, if the covered walkway was removed and garage, the proposed location is only three foot from the property line. And I understand the hardship of the applicant because of the existing sculpture. So do, in this condition, do we as a commissioner have authority to grant those side setback variance?
Yes, that would be within review.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, this is Sean Alexander.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, I just wanted to make you sure. So as for the material, I am kind of, you know, convinced or moved by, you know, applicant. I mean, this building is already not contributing contemporarily, you know, outside of the regular history. historic building, you know, architect's style. So having, you know, modifying, expanding with this contemporarily new, you know, fresh breath into this building, I think it's a great asset to the community and neighborhood. So I am not really convinced if we have to ask for red brick color or, you know, horizontal siding. I am quite convinced with a proposal by the architect. So I think that's all from me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If I may interrupt for just a second, this is Robin Ziegler. I just want to be picky about words because they mean different things. You would not be approving a setback variant because this body does not have the authority to approve variances, but you would be, you do have the authority to determine what the appropriate setback is for each project. So just wanted to make that clarification for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair, I'm going to call on you. Do you have a comment?
You know, it's a, it's a well-done structure. I think it will be an asset to the neighborhood, as the neighbors have mentioned it. I do think that, you know, certainly the removal of the walkway to the side that's been agreed to is important. I think that having the 20 feet between the house and the garage is important. I think based on what I'm seeing on the drawings, that they have the ability to stay within the five-foot setback with some redesign. And I also think that, that using the existing sculpture as a reason for us giving a waiver is more of a self-inflicted hardship than it is a true hardship that's imposed by geography or other constraints. So I love the project, think it's going to be a great one. I think our challenge before us is to construct a motion that encompasses this, the complexity of this project.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Mosley?
Yeah, I want to get, I think I have clarity from what the comments that commissioners have made, but I would like to get some clarity from the applicant that there, there are two, two connections that were proposed in the as-submitted application. The 20-foot covering with the movable wall and the fireplace, which, the movable wall and fireplace have been agreed to, you know, maintain that separation, that can be eliminated from the project. Then there's a walkway in the back and some covering that connects the garage and the main structure. I think staff has commented that we have permitted in the past breezeways, unenclosed, minimal. Again, moving or taking into account the purpose of this is to show a distinct separation of 20 feet between main, main structures and outbuildings, subservient outbuildings. And I think, given the lot coverage that this structure has, take it aside, take apart the architecture and the modern design of it, this were, you know, a traditional house with traditional details, the comment would be the same, I think, in that having, while it's quite convenient to walk under a covered walkway from the garage to the house, it certainly is important in historic neighborhoods not to have, you know, these locomotive houses that go from the alley, you know, all the way out the front setback. So I want to get clarity from the applicant that, I think the staff is recommending, and commissioners have commented, that there be a single connection from the garage to the house, and where that is could have some flexibility. But the further it is from one of the main streets, I would say that the better. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Was there, was there a question for me in there, or is it Brad Norris?
Brad, I just wasn't sure if there was still a desire by the applicant to keep two, two connectors or the breezeway plus some sort of porch covering, or where you, you and the applicant, the homeowner, came down on that? And it's good, this is a conversation sort of on the fly, but I think you'd stand the staff recommendation, but I'm wanting to make sure that we're all talking the same before we get too much.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, so I think where we are is that we're asking for a single connection, and that is where we have the current large breezeway, and we're willing to reduce that. And I hear what Sean is saying, and I guess what I would ask is that we be allowed to have a connection, and that basically we would work with Sean and staff on the width of it, whether it's eight feet, 10 feet, or, you know, exactly where it is and how that works. If we could just work through that with the staff, and as long as you approve a breezeway connection of some sort, that would be great.
So just in, again, looking at the summary, what are we left with here?
Commissioner Mosley, I'd like to ask a question of staff, and have Sean weigh in on this. There've been some comments by commissioners about the siding and the orientation of the siding and brick color, and I want to, certainly we can have the staff work with the applicant, but in providing appropriate guidance, it's always helpful. I'd like to have-
Yeah, I agree with that, Commissioner Mosley.
Sean, weigh in on the siding and whether, if it's not wood siding, you know, would it matter if it's metal and more reminiscent of, you know, of a roofing material? The architect may, you know, have objection to that. I want to maintain maybe some flexibility to do, not force, force something into design, necessarily by committee, but something that would be acceptable within the guidelines.
Commissioner Mosley? I think, again, like you commented, that we always try to give staff some better direction, because it is the who's us as the commission, so, and not be too ambiguous on, on what we want to see. Do you have recommendation?
Well, I, I think some of my thoughts, or I'll let my thoughts stand from previous comments and discussions I had with applicant, the architect applicant, Brad Norris, because I believe that a horizontal siding may, you know, affect the design potentially negatively. I don't doubt for a minute Brad's capabilities, but I don't, my comments are in contrast to what was stated by the staff and evaluated by the staff, as, you know, siding is generally horizontal, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. It is. And so I wanted to hear the staff, I know it's on the fly, but hear the staff's comments about alternatives, or now that they've heard the, some of the comments of commissioners, whether that is something that could be permitted.
This is Sean Alexander. I can try to speak to that. Before getting into the siding, about the, quick note about the color of the brick. I had not seen a permit for the brick being painted, but looking through notes in our, on our network drive, I see, permit was never issued, but it was essentially verbally approved by staff in 2007. Black Fox by Duron Paint that the owner cleared with a former staff member. So, and looking at a picture of the house from that, or the building from that time, it was one of those 70s buildings that from 200 feet away, it looks orange, but when you get close, you see there are five different colors of brick. And, and I imagine what happened was they were just allowed to pick a brick and match it, which, which we do today. So they happened to pick the darkest brick and match that with their paint. So yes, the existing brick color was approved in 2007, actually November of 2007. As to the, the vertical siding, it is an unusual, an atypical orientation for a historically appropriate material. We have not approved many, I would not say we've never approved it, but we've not approved many vertical or uses of wood siding. We did, we recommended approval of one in a different neighborhood, a new house, infill house with vertical siding. We recommended approval just in May of this year, and the commission approved it. There was not really any discussion. I looked at the minutes. So we recommended approval, you approved it. And just since, since then, that neighborhood has reacted negatively towards, towards that being approved. They have, the neighborhood leaders have been very vocal in their dismay at our recommendation and your approval. So we were reluctant to recommend approval again. However, it's a different neighborhood. Perhaps one might say that Edgefield is more tolerant of new things than, than other neighborhoods might be. But ultimately, it's, it's up to you, the commission, to discern, to determine whether or not it is a compatible material for new construction or not.
All right. To get more direction, so we've been a bit all over the board here, so let's kind of get it down to how we agree or disagree, or will give approval or disapproval. So I do want to go back to Mr. Norris, and just say, because of the conversation and discussions that the commission has had, is looking at the recommendation summary. Number one, the covered porch between the primary building and garage be eliminated, so that building is not attached. You agree to that?
I'd have, and narrow the width down to what is satisfactory to staff, if you have some sort of cover there.
Okay. Number two, I'm going line by line here, because again, it's been a lot of conversation. So that, number two, is that there's 20 foot of open space between the primary building and the outbuilding?
And there is per plan with that connection that we were just talking about, so.
The one that's number one.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three, the garage meets the minimum five-foot setback requirement on the right side of the property?
I think I heard someone say that, that you're, like I said originally, you know, we would, we'd like to keep that, if you can approve your part of it, and, you know, codes and zoning may not allow us to do it at all, so, you know, they may, it may be a moot point. But we'd like to, yeah, okay.
So we're still in question, one, two, and three. Number four, the covered walkway on the right side be eliminated, so the primary building completely meets the standard five-foot setback on the right side, kind of the same thing, but, right?
Well, we had a covered walkway, and we're agreeing to take that off. Yes.
Right. Okay. So number four, we totally agree.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then the new brick, the brick color is still in question. The cladding still in question. Roof color's good. Additional information provided on the blast plank, et cetera, of course. Locations, so D and E are within guidelines that is reasonable. Okay. So commissioners? Vice Chair Stewart?
So just for the sake of discussion, and knowing that it may be modified as we have discussion on it, realize this is a complex project, but I'll put a motion out for discussion. And that motion would be that with respect to 801 Russell Street, that we approve the application with the following conditions. Number one, as stated, that the covered porch be eliminated, however, that a covered walkway open on both sides would be allowed to be negotiated with staff, to be not greater than eight feet wide. And number two, that there's 20 feet of open space between the primary building and the outbuilding. Number three, the garage meets the minimum five-foot setback. Number four, the covered walkway be eliminated. Number five, that the material selections be approved by MHC staff, including A, that the condition of new brick, red, and if painted, that the color is red, or maintain the existing color that has become a historic part of the neighborhood. B, that a more typical type of cladding can be used, however, that the vertical siding could be appropriate, properly detailed, as determined by the staff. And then the condition C, D, and E, as stated by the staff recommendation.
I think we have that. Vice Chair, I do hear this, and I think sometimes we put the staff at, at a, you know, where it's difficult for them. What I'm hearing, especially about the cladding and the brick. Robin, do you have comments?
This is Robin Ziegler. We would also recommend that the motion maybe be clear about the, the width of the walkway, to be consistent with what's been approved in the past. And Mr. Alexander, I believe that was six feet. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure. That'd be good.
Okay. Should we be more definite about the brick color and cladding?
This is Robin again. I think we're clear on the brick color. More guidance on the cladding would probably prevent us from having to come back to you a second time. The more clarity we can have here, the better for everybody, probably.
Okay.
So Ben, why don't you weigh in here?
So that's going to be added to your motion?
I'll, this is just for discussion. I would argue that, that I think a horizontal, I can see a scenario where a shiplap could work. However, you know, I think a lap siding would, would really be difficult to achieve and would result in a less coherent project, in terms of something being of its time and place, given the form and massing of this project and the material selection. So I think for that reason, a horizontal siding is not, horizontal lap siding wouldn't be appropriate, given the design, in my opinion. I think the vertical siding, vertical wood siding, or any vertical siding is another question. I think the applicant's looking for, appears to me that from the, from the application that it's, you know, it's looking for something a little bit more warmth, some wood tones in that darker brown. And I think the natural, you know, materials complement the design well. Unfortunately, can't, I can't resolve the modern nature of the design with typically what's seen in historic wood siding. I don't have an answer for that, but I think I've previously stated that, and now twice, that I think a horizontal wood siding would be more appropriate to this design than would be a wood siding. A vertical siding would be more appropriate than a horizontal siding.
And what my motion said was that the vertical siding be appropriate if the detailing was approved by the, by the staff.
And I didn't have a problem with your motion at all, Sarah.
Yes. And Vice Chair, I think, I think we're the ones that have to recommend that and not the staff. If we, if we say, we, you know, I think it's not as definite as what they want to hear. If we, if we say we, you know, I think it's not as definite as what they want to hear. This is Chair Bell, and I do lean a little bit to how Commissioner Mosley has made some logic on that. You architects have more detailed knowledge. I see Commissioner Johnson has her hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, with this discussion and recommendation, would that be simpler if we remove condition number five A and B, but still give staff and applicant to work on the material? But so, it's not really limited to red or existing color, but between staff and architect, current color and, you know, formation or variation of the color. And as far as vertical siding, if we remove condition B, staff can work with the applicant, including approving a vertical siding. So, I thought it might be just simpler to just remove A, B, condition five A and five B.
This is Robin Ziegler, and I just want to say I so appreciate everyone's face and staff, I really do. But because these, because the color is not what's been approved in the past, because the material is not supposedly what meets the guideline, what would probably be the easiest for the applicant is for there to be a specific decision, rather than leaving it to us without the guidance of how we should be approaching something that isn't what we typically deal with.
Commissioner Johnson, is that clearer for you on that?
Yes, ma'am. In that case, I think Vice Chair Stewart eloquently stated, so he might be able to reinstate his motion in this condition A and B. So, I will leave it to Vice Chair Stewart.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair?
Sure. I think with that, actually limiting the choices by including the conditions rather than excluding the conditions and opening up all sorts of options that may or may not be in conformance of the guidelines is probably the better way to do it. I think that A, if we do allow what the staff recommendation says of the red, which does, we know, meet the guidelines, but then also allow the existing color to remain. I think we've been told that that was apparently one of the original colors of some of the brick in that, in that structure. So, there is some historic precedent for that.
I agree with you, Vice Chair.
And then with B, I would say that instead of putting the detailing requirement on the staff, if we just say that, that vertical wood siding would be approved, that that would, that would take the burden off the staff and places clearly on the commission.
Yes. I concur with you, Vice Chair. This is Chair Bell. So, is that much clearer, Ms. Ziegler?
It is. I think what this would look like then is that five B would just be removed. But if the detailing is still important, which I'm sure it is, did you want to provide any guidance on what that detailing should be or not?
I understand, this is Chair Bell again, is that we are agreeing to vertical siding with detailed condition?
I think Robin's probably right. We could probably just eliminate the B, five B.
Any other?
To me, the things that makes this, to me, one of the things that makes this a unique and a little bit different project is that it was not a historic Victorian home to start with. It wasn't, you know, a traditional residential form in the neighborhood. And clearly, the new expression of the structure is unique. And although in scale proportionate to what's in the neighborhood, clearly in form, it's picking up on what the original form was and then expanding on that to, to be a form of today's time versus mimicking the past. So, I think it is a unique project from that standpoint.
Yes. Vice Chair, I do agree with that. I think, I think I lean to keep the A and B, and we've discussed it at length, and given some good logic on that, so that if we're asked, you know, if we have to go back on this, we've given some good guidance and logic to that. So, I, you know, removing B is probably not what I would recommend. But let's, Commissioner Fitz, you have comment, please?
Yeah, I agree with, with kind of the clarity that Commissioner Stewart just added to the vertical siding. The thing I was going to add to that, that I stated before too, is that you could also add, I mean, technically, these are additions. And so, I think you could, could add that to some of the logic as well. But the vertical siding is being used on an addition, not on the main. It's a little bit of a stretch on this one because of the form and how it's being added on to, but it, but it is an addition, so.
Yes. Commissioner, I agree with you, Chair Bell here. Any other comments? Very, very good discussion, yeah, because it's, it is, like I said, a robust project, and there's lots of details to this that we've looked at, and it's good discussion. Any other comments, commissioners, or is the motion on the floor?
Chair Bell, this is Alex Dickerson with Metro Legal. Given the discussion we've had, I'd ask that the motion be restated formally.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice Chair, it's up to you again.
Okay. Here goes.
I think we're much clearer now.
With respect to 801 Russell Street, the commission recommends approval based on staff recommendations, including that the covered porch between the primary building and garage be eliminated, that there be 20 feet of open space between the primary building and the outbuilding. Three, the garage meets the minimum set, five-foot setback on the right side of the property. Four, the covered walkway on the right side be eliminated so that the primary building completely meets the standard five-foot setback on the right side. Five, the material selections are approved by MHC staff prior to installation, including A, that the new brick will be either red or painted the color of the existing structure. B, that vertical siding will be approved for this project. C, the roof color is approved. D, additional information is provided on the glass plank, metal chimney, cladding, and metal railings. E, the location of utilities and location and design of any appearances be reviewed prior to purchase and installation. And then I think the other thing that we talked about was that a covered walkway will be allowed between the mat primary structure and the outbuilding, not to exceed six feet in width, and open on both sides.
Well said, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Fitz?
A second.
Okay. There is a motion, a first and a second, and I will take the roll. Again, very good discussion. When I call your name, please say yes or no. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, we have been on, we've been on going now almost three hours, and request that we take a 10-minute break, if that is all right.
Thank you.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Are you saying yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we will take a 10-minute break. 1513 16th Avenue South. And for the public to call, the number is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Baldock will be our presenter.
Melissa Baldock, Historic Zoning Staff. This is addition to the historic building at 1513 16th Avenue South. It isn't a perfect fit for the guidelines. However, in the past, the commission has looked at this district, the South Music Row District, differently. The majority of building types of the district are single-family with some multifamily types. However, for decades, most of the buildings have been in office-studio related use, related to the music business. The use of these properties has become an important character-defining feature of the district. So, additions have been considered differently than they might have in residential districts that may have sub-commercial or offer uses, office uses within them. Because of the use, rear yards are not, are now parking areas, so there's less of a concern with a longer even taller addition changing, quote, "the open space" character of the district, as there might be in other buildings with residential uses. The project meets the design guidelines with the exception of height, lack of windows on the right side, and a rooftop addition. Addition is less than two feet taller and might be, is at least two feet taller, and it might even be taller than two feet taller. The architect is unsure at this time. It is also readily visible. Staff recommends approval of a two-feet of additional height, as that amount has been approved in other projects in the past, and the size of the addition is minimal in terms of footprint. Staff recommends a new evaluation of any additional height beyond the two feet. Staff recommends approval despite the lack of windows on the right side, because the addition is a miserable size and depth, and adding windows will not meet building code. Also, if and when the neighboring lot is developed, the windowless wall will not be visible. Staff's main concern is a request for the rooftop deck. Staff is looking for guidance on how to address rooftop additions in general, as well as for this specific case, and there have been a few recent requests, and there is another request just after this one on the agenda today. For this project, the rooftop deck is proposed on top of the existing building. No rooftop decks have yet been approved on historic building, only on additions or on new buildings. Although small and well-designed, staff is concerned that the approval would set a precedent for future rooftop decks on historic buildings, and that rooftop decks do not meet the design guidelines for roof forms. Historically, residential buildings did not have rooftop decks. Staff is recommending approval with the condition that the existing roof form is retained, windows and doors are reviewed, and an addition's height should be reassessed if it is more than two feet taller than the existing building. With these conditions, staff finds the project to meet the South Music Row design guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Baldock. The applicant is on the line. If so, announce your, your name, please.
This is Mark Bixler with Manuel Zeitlin Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Bixler. Do you have comments, please?
Okay. I want to make sure I have the floor. Okay, thank you all. So, as Moshead said, this is in the South Music Row Conservation Overlay. Most recently, this property was used by Dismiss House, which is residential setting for former inmates transitioning back to society. It's being proposed now as commercial office space. We are, in the addition that was shown, we're actually removing an existing rear structure on the northwest corner of the building that exists now. Maybe the existing pictures, as opposed to my images, are better. It's not clear if that northwest corner structure, which is two-story tall, is even original. It has a brick foundation where the rest of the, the building has a two-foot-thick stone foundation. Yeah, there were some existing photos that I had submitted with, with the application that might show it better.
Those photos, they're in the commissioners' pockets that they received, but they didn't make it into the.
Okay. So, that, that addition on the northwest corner, again, it's not clear if this is original, but the existing house is all brick exterior walls, and this addition piece is wood-framed walls. It also has vinyl siding on it at the moment. The foundation is in bad shape, and we intend to remove it and replace it with a new addition. The construction of the new addition in the, on the specific location is to accommodate egress stair, which is required, that doesn't exist in the building right now, an elevator for accessibility, again, which doesn't exist right now, restrooms to meet the building code. The discussion about the rooftop addition, as it was called, we're not actually adding onto the height of the building. We're proposing to add a railing around an existing roof. We would replace that existing roof, which currently is metal, and I think that actually showed up in one of your photos that did make it into the presentation there. Yeah, there you go. And you can sort of see the northwest corner addition in that as well. I don't know if that's an original roof or not. I don't know if they built metal roofs on houses 100 years ago or not. There was a comment in the staff commentary on it that they believe it was an original roof. I don't know how, but the roof is not visible. It's a very low slope. It's about a half inch per foot. And what we would like to do instead is to put a flat roof there. It won't change the exterior at all. In fact, we would keep the gutter that runs the outside of it and sort of the cornice in that fascia detail, which you can see in the image to the right of the photograph, and, and then add a railing on the top of it. The only piece that potentially is a visible, is visible from 16th Avenue is the very corner of that railing. I don't think that the railing jeopardizes the architectural historic character of this building. The properties behind this building are all commercial at this point, and we're separated from them with our parking lot and alley, and then the parking lot behind those adjacent structures across the alley from us. In addition, I want to reference some of the Secretary of Interior standards on historic and conservation overlay neighborhoods, specifically around that, you know, minimal changes are made to defining characteristics of the existing structure. I personally don't find that that flat roof, the existing flat roof is a defining characteristic of it. Distinctive features, finishes, and construction techniques are preserved. I don't think that that existing roof is a distinctive feature of the, of the existing building, and that exterior alterations should be differentiated from the old and should be compatible. So, what we've proposed as a railing is thin steel so that it's, it's almost as invisible as we possibly can make it on top of a new coping stone, which would go on top of the existing brick walls. And it may be better to see that from the other side, as opposed to the image that's on the screen. In addition, the exterior space, given the era of COVID, provides outdoor space for the employees in the building to be able to conduct meetings. And I would leave it at that for questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bixler. Do we have any public comments or call-ins? We have none, so we will close public hearing, and we will have commissioner discussions. Commissioner Fitz?
I have a question for the applicant, for the, the wall that does not have any openings shown in it, and it was said that it could not because of building code. I am assuming that is because of proximity to the property line, but I'm also wondering if fire-rated windows are allowed in that, if that's permissible within the building code as an option. Thanks.
Commissioner, is that a question to the applicant?
Yes, that was, yes, that was a question to the. Yes, that was, yes, that was a question to the applicant.
Okay, I think we just didn't quite, you might not have had your microphone on. So, Mr. Bixler?
Yes, so you're correct. Currently, or actually previously, this building, plus the vacant lot immediately north of it, were a single lot. The company that owned it has since subdivided them, providing five feet of side yard on the side that you're seeing right here. As it sits right now, the windows on that side of the existing house or building, without the addition, already exceed what is allowed on the property line. With the addition that's been proposed, we will bring the building to as close to compliance as we can, because again, we're only five feet away. Fire-rated windows would be allowed on that face of the building. Obviously, fire-rated windows are not inexpensive. And also that the addition, as proposed, is being used for elevator, a fire stair, and restrooms. So if there was a desire to put windows in that side from the Historic Commission, I'd need to better understand which of those functions would have windows in it.
Thank you, Mr. Bixler. Commissioner Fitz, did that answer your question?
It did. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, commissioners? Discussion? Commissioner Mahal?
Yeah, I just want some clarification on the staff recommendation, please. So, they are, is the staff all right with the removing the roof form for a rooftop deck?
This is Robin Ziegler. No, that is one of the conditions. It is not the roof material that we're concerned about, but the historic roof form. And also, historic buildings did not have rooftop decks, and so we don't want to set that precedent for now, allowing for rooftop decks on historic buildings.
Okay, so the roof form is retained. Okay. All right. I got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything from other architects? Okay, Vice Chair Stewart?
Madam Chairman, I appreciate this project and look forward to seeing it. With respect to Fifteenth Thirteenth Sixteenth Avenue South, I recommend approval with staff's conditions.
There's a motion. And Commissioner Mahal?
I second that motion.
Okay, first, and there's a second. And are there any other questions? If not, we will take the roll. Okay? Yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Thank you. Commissioner John?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And thank you. So now it's time for public to call on the next project, which is Twenty-eight oh six Oakland Avenue, and that number is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And Ms. Baldock will be our presenter.
Melissa Baldock, Historic Zoning Staff. Twenty-eight oh six Oakland Avenue is a circa 1930 brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Conservation Overlay. Sorry, a little technical. There you go. While the house is a one-and-a-half-story form on the front and right facades, on the left facade, the addition is two stories above the raised basin. This is a historic condition. In September 2020, MHDC approved an addition in a garage slash statue in the last, with the condition that the applicant worked with staff for a new design for the rooftop deck. Staff provided the applicant with the options for moving the deck fully to the rear or for a design that was more in keeping with past approvals for rooftop decks on new construction. The applicant would like to request a proposed design that staff finds is not consistent with past decisions. Showed here are the current proposal and the previous proposal for the right elevation. And here are the rear elevations, both the current and the previous one from September. For the September version, which is the one on the right-hand side, the floor of the rooftop deck posts were inset two feet from the back wall of the house. With the proposed revision, the posts are inset approximately three feet, six inches from the sidewall of the historic house. In addition, the balcony railing seen on the September side elevation, on that one, on the right side elevation, is now mainly a pitched roof. Rooftop decks are not an element seen historically in the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. The design guidelines state, quote, "The roof of a new building shall be visually incompatible by not contrasting greatly with the roof shape, orientation, and pitch of surrounding historic buildings." With the exception of chimneys, rooftop equipment and roof penetration should be located so as to minimally minimize their visibility from the street. Staff considers the rooftop decks like this one to be a roof penetration that should not be located, that should be located so as to be minimally visible from the street, and we don't find that this one is. The commission has approved rooftop decks in the past where they have been tucked in without a roof and are as minimally visible as possible. Staff finds that this redesign does not go far enough to tuck the rooftop deck in and to obscure its visibility, and we are also concerned about setting a precedent for future rooftop decks. Staff therefore does not find that this rooftop deck meets Section 2B-1E and 2B-2 of the design guidelines. Just for your information, these are the front facade and the left-side facades. We're not asking for any changes here. That's just as approved from September. In conclusion, staff recommends disapproval, finding that the proposed rooftop deck does not meet Section 2B-1E and 2B-2 of the design guidelines. And I believe the applicant should be here to speak with you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. Will the applicant raise their hand and/or announce yourself, please?
Yeah, my name's Martin Wick. I'm at nine twelve Bailey Street. I'm the architect on this project.
Thank you.
So, just before I start talking about this, I just wanted to point out that the one Russell, it was just approved with a considerable amount of roof deck designed on that project at the second floor of the house. Roof decks that were both uncovered and covered by various gable and flat roofs. There was no comment on that project about whether those roof decks were appropriate. And I understand that the designs are different, but the argument here at twenty-eight Oakland hinges on the fact that rooftop decks are not typically approved without certain conditions within historic neighborhoods. And the rooftop decks on that project did not meet those requirements either. So, with that said, this has been a very frustrating experience for these last two months since I originally submitted this project. When we left the last meeting, we had direction to work with staff on the design and very little else from this commission, leaving us in a very ambiguous position. I have tried to work with that recommendation, but staff have continued to insist that I'm violating two guidelines, and we have not been able to come to a compromise on how to make this design work. They continue to tell me that I am violating Sections 2B-1E and 2B-2, but that's false. 2B-1E states that roofs of a new building shall be visually compatible by not contrasting greatly with the roof shape, orientation, and pitch of surrounding historic buildings. With the exception of chimneys, rooftop equipment and roof penetration shall be located so as to minimize their visibility from the street. In this particular case, twenty-eight oh six Oakland has a unique historic design with a side-to-side gable with a raised two-story portion that breaks that gable. I have some pictures included from the historic house. I don't know if we can switch over to those that show the frame. Those are the exteriors of the current condition, and then we have some interior shots, I think somewhere, that show the framing of the house. Did those not get included?
I apologize. I don't think I received those. These are the only, I don't think I received any interior photos. I'm sorry they didn't make it in.
Well, just to clarify, the interior framing on this house, as a lot of historic houses have, is the sheathing and subfloor are the forty-five-degree angle, you know, one by six boards. And those boards are consistent throughout the entire house. There's not a point where they break and look older. They are continuous boards between the brick portion and this two-story portion. So, this two-story portion is historic to the house. All evidence points to it being original to when this was built. So, that's the context that we are using with our design while applying modern materials and aesthetics. So to suggest that we are somehow out of context with that does not seem to make sense to me. I have asked repeatedly whether the existing roof is being included in the context. But other than by saying that it is historic, I've never received an answer if it's being considered the context. What it dealing with, staff has completely avoided dealing with that question. I've also repeatedly asked whether the flat roof on the current design that we have submitted is a part of the problem, and whether a sloped roof that more closely matches that context would be more appropriate. But they have never answered that question either, and have simply stood behind removal of the roof deck or adding a roof on three sides of it as my only options. They're also now suggesting that the porch that I have designed here is some kind of a roof penetration that violates the guidelines. But second-story porches are approved on projects throughout historic neighborhoods, all the times with varying levels of detailing. If we, I think it was maybe a couple more images forward, there are a couple of historic houses that have had porches designed on second floors that are underneath a contextual roof form. I think there's one more ahead of this as well. That, like I said, have varying kind of types of detailing, modern, traditional. And they're all designed underneath contextual roof we are doing on this project. That guideline also says too that we simply have to minimize visibility, which the original design does, by placing it at the rear of the addition and two feet in from the side of the historic house. If we go back to that model image from the street, you can kind of see, you can see how little of it is actually visible from the street view. To follow up on this, I have also asked them about whether enclosing the porch would be a solution here, as that would also more clearly be a porch and would also more closely resemble the context that we are working with. But staff has also never answered that question, and have simply stood behind their decision that it needs to be removed or that it needs to have a roof on three sides. I don't really know what part of 2B-2 exactly I'm violating, so I can't really address that point here. As far as I can tell, I'm meeting all of the pieces of the guideline that they reference in their recommendation. I hope it's the truly frustrating part has been that throughout all of this, the only real guidance that I have received from staff has been that this design requires removal or a roof on three sides of what they are calling this rooftop deck. They've ignored all of my other questions and simply repeatedly stated that this is what I have to do here. But this design suggestion is not a guideline. There's nothing in the guidelines that says you have to have a roof on three sides of a porch on the back of a house. And it feels very to me. They don't just exist to give designers and homeowners a framework to design within. They also exist to prevent the commission from making arbitrary decisions. Very early on, they state the guidelines are criteria and standards developed jointly by the MHDC and the residents of the neighborhood, which are used in determining the architectural compatibility of proposed projects. The guidelines provide direction for project applicants and ensure that the decisions of the MHDC are not arbitrary or based on anyone's personal taste. So, I have to ask, how how is this commission even able to suggest this design direction in the first place? If there is nothing written in the guidelines that says a porch or a deck needs to be surrounded on three sides by a roof, even staff's recommendation shows how arbitrary the suggestion is. In the submitted redesign, they say that the design does not go far enough to tuck the porch away, but at no point have they recommended how much roof is required or pointed me to a guideline which helps to clarify their position. The redesign is already four feet back from the sidewall of the historic house, one foot former would be required to be, and two feet further than a two-story addition would be required to be. Even the initial design was two feet from the historic wall. So, to wrap up, I have two questions for the commission that I need an answer on. First, how is this design not contextual based on the historic form of the house that we are adding on to? And second, how is this commission able to recommend this design direction when it is not supported by the guidelines? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Okay, do we have any public comment or call-in? Okay, neither, and so we will close public hearing and Commissioner's discussion. Commissioner Mosley?
It's a question for staff. Is the image that's on the screen now accurate representation of the current application? With respect to the porches?
Sure, I may need to defer to the applicant for that. He did send them to me yesterday or the day before, and it looks to me like the previous version, but I will have the architect confirm that because he's the one who did the renderings.
Yeah. This rendering is actually, we had it done before the redesign. So this shows the original condition where the railing is at the full extent of the sidewall of the house.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah.
Okay. Just for the record, that was Mr. Wick and Commissioner Mosley. Great. Commissioner, comment? Melissa, can you pan back to the previous, and, yes, thank you. Commissioners, does that help? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question to Melissa. In the staff report, it says rooftop decks are not an element seen historically in Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood or Conservation Overlay. Is there any other rooftop in this Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Overlay? Or if this proposal would be rather first-of-kind?
I'm not aware of any historic rooftop decks. But again, I don't know if I know every single property. That neighborhood is very big, but you know, it's not a common feature, and I can't think of one as an example. I don't know, I don't think that there are any on new construction. The examples the applicant showed were ones that were on two-story houses, so those were at the second-story level, where staff considers this to be at the rooftop level because on that side, that facade, it's cutting into the roof versus being a second-level deck. If that makes sense, that distinction makes sense. Like if this was a full-two-story house, you know, like a four-square, you know, a rooftop deck, a deck at the second level would be okay because that's not the roof level, but this is at the roof level. I don't know if there are any other in Belmont Hillsborough. I don't know if there are any other in Belmont Hillsborough. I know that there was one Shelby that we approved about two or three years ago where they were kind of tucked into the center and not highly visible from the street. And I, I don't think you can see them at all from the street. They have been constructed.
Thank you. It's very helpful. I, I believe, you know, one of our role is to really look into each conservation or zoning overlay neighborhood. Because, you know, not every historical zoning overlay is uniformly having same characteristic. So this, you know, Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood has a historical, you know, specific to that area. So any, you know, addition or new proposal has to expect existing neighborhood characteristic. And I, I do appreciate for that comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Byssett Stewart?
When, in looking at this project, I want to apologize to both the applicant and to the staff that we as a commission didn't give more clarity in our direction on this before and apologize for all the time on both their parts that's been used in trying to find a solution to this. You know, I, I see the changes from the previous proposal as being very minor in nature. And, and although I do see where the changes were made, I don't think it changes the view of the structure, the elevation, the interruption of the roof plane. And, and to me, the, the staff is right in that what we're seeing here is an element on this roof that disrupts that roof plane and disrupts the elevation of that house in a way that's inappropriate for according and conformance of the guidelines. So, you know, based on that, I, I, I can see where the, the staff would have felt that putting something on the back of the house where you didn't see it at all from the front that was enclosed on the sides by a roof would, would have been appropriate. But I sure don't see this as, as something that's compatible with the structure or the roof form.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I echo what Commissioner Stewart just said and listening, and again, you know, also with, with the work that's gone in and the, and the lack of clarity, I guess, on what we were looking for. But I mean, to me, you know, the examples given were not any of the same situation. And I, I'm not sure what the applicant was implying about the, you know, the, the original structure on the back being different. You know, I'm looking at the south elevation from front to back of the house, you know, I see roof, roof, and then the third floor. So I don't, the other side, I think that's the north elevation. The south elevation, I mean, it's, you know, roof, roof of the dormers, some windows, and then a third floor. So that's, that's my problem with it. I, again, I don't think it's compatible for all the reasons that the staff has said.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Mosley?
Commissioner Jones sort of, I'm gonna repeat what, what she just said. We were asked a specific question and I'm gonna echo what she said and give a specific answer. The applicant's sides in the neighborhood are noticeably different from your proposal. There's a consistent roof line that covers upper-level porches on both of those projects and is not a change in roof form, a drastic change in roof form, which your proposed design is. So I, I think that, listen, my mind is pretty, pretty clear in, in terms of how this is different or not the same as those conditions. Also, not being the staff's job to tell you what, what, what needs to happen to make it compatible or comply. I think certainly in this case, roof shape and roof form over this upper-story porch is paramount to the discussion for the non-compatible.
Commissioners, is there a motion? Or more questions? Vice Chair Stewart?
With respect to this project, move for disapproval based on staff recommendations.
There's a motion. Commissioner Williams?
I second the motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we will take the roll. Yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. And we will move on to 208 Gentry Avenue. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that one's deferred. So the next one, and this is Robin Ziegler, the next one would be 1904 Blair.
Okay. Have that on there, I'm sorry. Okay, 1904 Blair Boulevard. And again, the number two call in is 629-255-1911, and Mr. Alexander will be presenter.
Okay, this is Sean Alexander, and I'm telling you about a proposal to construct a new two-story house, replacing a non-contributing building. The house will be 35 feet wide with a cross-gabled roof and a partial width, one-story porch. Essentially, that's a four-square form. It is, it does include a detached outbuilding in the rear yard. As I said, it has a four-square form, a common historic house type in the neighborhood. The maximum roof height is 33 feet 3 inches from grade with an eve height of 26 feet 4 inches and a one-and-a-half-foot-tall foundation. The materials are appropriate. Staff recommends a condition that the foundation material is different than the primary first-floor wall material. The roof form is appropriate, the window proportion and rhythm is appropriate. The structure gains a basement at the rear due to a drop in grade. This is typical of similar lots on this block. The outbuilding meets the design guidelines for outbuildings. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill construction with the following conditions: that the floor height is consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses, to be verified in, in the field by MHCC staff; that the front setback is consistent with setbacks of adjacent historic houses, to be verified by MHCC staff in the field; the foundation is differentiated from the first floor with a different material; that the brick selection, window and door selection, and roof color is approved prior to purchase and construction; and that the HVAC units are located on the rear of the building or on the side behind the midpoint of the structure. And with those conditions, staff finds that this proposal will meet the guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood conservation zoning overlay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And if the applicant is on the line, please announce yourself.
Hello, this is Peggy Newman, 1306 Belmont Park Court, Nashville, 37215.
Hello, Ms. Newman.
Hi. The only thing I want to say, unless you have other questions, is on the site plan we have that the, we have a two-car garage, the outbuilding is a, also a dada. It would have 582 square feet up there, and I don't know if that makes any difference right now or not. I, it's something I just noticed. It's not on the, the garage elevations, but it's on the site plan, so I don't know if that makes a difference.
Okay, we, do we need clarification from?
I think that was noted in the staff recommendation. This outbuilding does have a three-foot setback, but that is, that's allowed, this is different than the one you saw before. This building, because it's less than 700 square feet, is permitted to have a three-foot side setback. So there's no issue with the, with that for this building.
All right, thank you. Then I, if you have questions, I don't have any, so just let me know if you have questions.
Okay. Ms. Newman, so recommendation summary is good on your side.
Great.
Okay. I mean, you're, you're appro-
Yeah. Oh, yeah, on my side, yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you. All right, do we have any public comment or call in? Neither, so we will close public hearing and discussion by commissioners. Or a motion? Commissioner Jones, then Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes, this is Commissioner Jones. You know, I would just say, I think, you know, this is a nice infill project for the neighborhood and therefore I was gonna go ahead and make a motion regarding 1904 Blair Boulevard to approve this new house and the detached outbuilding with all staff recommendations.
And I'll second, and I'll second that motion.
And the vice chair seconds. So we will, any questions? And seeing none, Commissioner Mahal?
Yeah, just for my own edification, the structure was, the demolition of the previous building that was built in 1960 was approved administratively. I'm just, I'm just curious about what the premise was and, and why that demolition wasn't, didn't, wasn't run by the commission, or was it? I, I just don't recall it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Demolition of non-contributing buildings is one of the types of items that the commission has given, delegated to the staff administrative authority for. So demolition of non-contributing buildings, construction of small outbuildings, there are maybe half a dozen, eight, eight items that we can approve administratively. And those are, list of the administrative approvals is, is included in your commission packets each month. So this one was determined to be non-contributing because it was built several years after the period of significance for the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Alexander and Commissioner Mahal. So there was a first and a second, and I will take roll. And please say yes or no. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams? Thank you. So we will move on to 2809 Ackland Avenue, and that number to call in for the public is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Baldock will be our presenter.
Melissa Baldock, Historic Zoning Staff. 2809 Ackland Avenue is a one-and-a-half-story brick Tudor revival house constructed about 1930. It contributes to the historic character of the Hillsborough West End Conservation Overlay. The applicant first proposes to reopen the front box entry, which was enclosed sometime between 2002, 2007 and 2009. Staff finds this partial demolition to be appropriate because it's restoring and historic condition. So here's the first floor planned, and here is the second floor plan. The addition is inset just 18 inches on both the first and second level. Staff is recommending that both sides be inset a full two feet, as is typically required for a two-story addition with taller eaves like this one. Here are the side elevations. These upper-level dormers project out 18 inches to line up the sidewalls of the house. So those dormers are not inset up, as is typically required, but are actually projecting out and line up with the sidewall. The commission typically requires that dormers be inset two feet from the sidewalls of the historic house. Therefore, staff recommends that the upper-level dormers be inset at least two feet from the sidewalls of the historic house. Here are the rear elevations. Here you can see the projection of the dormers. Looking at this elevation, the addition on the left side, both the main floor, main form of the addition and the dormer do not meet the five-foot setback requirement and therefore require a setback determination. So just to be clear, both the dormer and a portion of the first level don't meet the five-foot setback. The historic house is located approximately three feet 3 inches from the side property line. The main wall of the addition is inset one foot 6 inches from the sidewall of the house, which means that is, will be just four feet 9 inches or about three inches closer than it should be to the side property line. In addition, the upper-level projecting dormer will encroach on the side setback as it will be just three feet, 3 inches from the side property line. Although the commission has approved side setback determinations for additions, when the addition does not extend wider than the house in the past, staff finds in this instance that the side setback determination does not meet the design guidelines. Staff is recommending that the addition be inset two feet on both sides because it has taller eaves in a two-story form. In addition, staff is recommending that the dormers not project out from the addition's sidewalls. If both these conditions are met, a setback determination is not needed. So therefore, staff recommends approval with the conditions that the sidewalls of the addition be inset from two feet from the sidewalls of the house, the dormers be set in two feet from the sidewalls of the house too, that staff approve all materials and the location of the HVAC units.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. And if the applicant is on the line, please announce yourself.
This is Van Pond, Van Pond Architect, 2929 Sidco Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. Can you all hear me?
Hello, Mr. Pond.
Hello. Thank you all for taking time to look at all these things all afternoon. 2809 Ackland Avenue, if you all could, Melissa, I think, could you roll back to the front elevation picture? This is a really unique Tudor house that the roof form actually encloses two habitable levels of space in the taller portion. And in this case, this also is set on a street where there's a pattern of development where there's, to the left-hand side of the photo you're looking at, there's a driveway for 2809 Ackland, because there's not an alley. And to the right side of that is another driveway accessing 2811 Ackland Avenue. In effect, there's not a lot of opportunity for 2811 to move toward 2809 with the conservation overlay in place, which is great, kind of sets up a, a different rhythm and spacing and some of why we are asking for a setback reduction. Couple of things, and I'll be brief. We designed the rear addition, and if we could move to the site plan, do you please? With incents of one foot 6 inches. And kind of using our massing to follow the kind of conditions created by the details of the existing house. We proposed eaves for the majority of those side elevations to be one-and-a-half stories. Could we get a rear elevation, please? As you see here, to mask the mass of the addition from the, from any kind of shadowed street view. In reading the guidelines, the reason we proposed a one-foot-six-inch addition, we did benefit from it, of course, is that on page 20 in Placement- it does speak to, the guidelines do speak to generally rear additions that put one foot for each story from the sidewall. I look at this as having a one-and-a-half-story eve. Yes, it's a two-story addition at the rear, but we're also not doing a two-story shed dormer kind of addition to the rear. So we'd like for you to consider that as, as part of maybe allowing us to have that one-foot-six-inch setback. We are using a divide, this design device to lower the scale perceived behind a really tall roof. Also, kind of the projecting dormers commentary. I told them, when we discussed this earlier, these are projecting bay windows. They do give the benefit of space, but they also give us, if you'll give me a side view, please, side elevation. They also give us the benefit of kind of breaking up a rather long roof line on the addition. Articulating that just a bit. I'm not really sure in the guidelines how insetting dormers two feet kind of go into this, but we'd like to keep those, if possible, as a projection, just, just for that articulation. I don't think it violates the visual plane of the roof from the street. It's very low visibility, and that's really what I've got to say on this. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you all again.
Thank you, Mr. Pond. Do we have any public comment or call-in? We have neither, so we will close public hearing and have commissioner discussion or question. I know it's late. Commissioners, are you still there? Okay. Commissioner Mahal.
Yeah, I suppose, could I have staff review the recommendations and clarify what the applicant is, is wanting to change here? Could you just go with that?
Yeah, so it's actually pretty easy. You know, really, we want the addition to be inset, maybe the rear view will. We want, I don't know if you guys can see my cursor or not, but the, we want the, the addition to be inset a full two feet. So right here, it's 18 inches, so another six inches on this side, and six inches on this side. And we don't, we are asking that, or recommending that the, the dormers don't project out, that they also line up, you know, so the whole thing be shifted so it's a full two feet in, on both sides.
And Commissioner, this is Chair Bell, so they're asking to have a lesser than the two feet by six inches.
Yeah, so by this addition on this side right here, again, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, but I'm circling it.
Sure, we can see it.
This wall, this wall right here is about three inches over the property line. And then this is, I'm trying to do the math quickly, it's, it's like, this one is only three feet, three inches from the property line, so it's about one foot nine inches over where it should be, under the base zoning.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
And you mean from that, the setback line, not the property line, right?
Vice Chair.
Well, it's three feet, three inches from the property line, because the setback line is five feet, so it's over, it's over the setback line.
Okay.
As designed, yes.
Commissioner Mahal.
Well, that clarifies, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mosley.
Would, would the same, I'm sorry for maybe not paying close enough attention, I'm getting weary out here. Do the comments on the, the left side of the page, from what we're looking at, and I forgive me for not knowing my orientation here, north, south, east, or west, but do those apply to both sides in terms of coming out flush with the main form of the house? Given there is the little side gable, shorter gable piece? Or do they apply to both sides, in your opinion of the guidelines?
Hey, guys, I'm in the meeting, sorry, sorry if my kids are. So if you, I don't know if this floor plan helps to clarify, but here's the sidewall, the addition, which is inset 18 inches, and then here are the two dormers that project out. So they are lining up, the walls of these dormers are lining up the sidewalls of the house. So is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so your comment would apply to both sides.
Yes, we're, yes, we're recommending that they both be inset a full two feet. You know, the setback is kind of just a secondary issue, and the main issue is that we thought with the scale of the, of the design and of the addition, that it should be inset a full two feet. If that makes sense.
Commissioners. Commissioner Jones.
Sure, while, I mean, obviously, you know, I mean, I think this is a very nice-looking project. You know, I think the, with the zoning and the setbacks and everything that taken into account, I, I'm in agreement with staff on bringing it in and, and just making it more in line. That's my thoughts on this one.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Regarding 2809 Ackland Avenue, I move for approval of this rear addition with all staff recommendations, and this is Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Commissioner Mahal.
I second Commissioner Jones' motion.
Okay, there is a first and a second, any other discussion? Commissioner Mosley.
Can I look at the two side elevations once again? I'm, you know, I know, we've got a mission, I'm just, I just wanted to reconsider the applicant's explanation for enlivening those, I mean, the architectural detailing of those side gable pieces. I'm a bit compelled by that argument. We have a motion and a second, so I'll, I'll.
Boy, yes. Okay, we'll move through the motion, see? Is that good? Okay. All right, I'll take the roll, say yes or no? Let me ask a question to Commissioner Mosley. Does that mean just one side, or that particular, I'm gonna pause here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I think that the project is, as submitted, is strong in the argument of breaking up those besides, which has to do with form. And, but, but it is, I mean, there's no question that it does it to the letter, follow what the recommendations are. So I'm a bit torn to be, you know, in, in compliance, to remain in compliance and not be arbitrary about the addition.
That's right.
Inside and outside.
Right, we move to compliance. Okay, I will take the roll, yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart.
Well, I have to say, it's a beautifully done project, but I do think that it would set a dangerous precedent as far as obviating the two feet and having extended dormers versus recessed. And so I'll say yes to the motion.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal.
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. We will move forward to, hang in there, everybody, 1809 Russell Street. And the number to call is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Sajit will present the project.
All right, the historic house at 1809 Russell Street was severely damaged by the March tornado, and MHCC staff issued an emergency demolition permit in early April. As proposed, the infill meets all design guidelines. The height and scale are appropriate for the historic context. Here are, here are context photos of nearby historic homes on this block of Russell Street prior to the tornado. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit. And if the applicant is on the line, I don't see the name, but if you are, please announce yourself. Okay. Pretty straightforward. Ms. Eglar, any public comment or call? Okay, neither, so we will close public hearing and have discussion or a motion. Commissioner Jones.
Yes. Again, we extend our heartfelt sympathies as a commission to everyone who lost their homes in the tornado. And regarding this project at 1809, I think it's just a great, great house for the neighborhood, and therefore I move for approval with all staff recommendations.
Okay. There is a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, I second the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. And so we will take roll call, yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Mahal.
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. The next is 2807 27th Avenue South, and the public call-in number is 629-255-1911, and Ms. Sajit will be our presenter.
The house located at 2807 27th Avenue South is a circa 1930 two-story brick house that contributes to the historic character of the Hillsborough-Weston neighborhood. The commission approved a rear addition as well as the demolition and reconstruction of the nonhistoric Port Cocheaur in 2017. The house sits approximately 115 feet back from the front property line, which is unusual for the context, and there is no rear alley for the site. The application is to construct a covered porch addition that attaches to the rear of the existing Port Cocheaur. An existing single-story shed will be removed or demolished with the project. The footprint of that shed is less than 100 square feet. Outbuildings with a footprint of 100 square feet or less are not reviewed in historic zoning overlays. Since the house is less than 30 feet wide and shifted on the lot, a wider rear addition could meet the design guidelines. However, staff finds that the addition does not meet the design guidelines as proposed for several reasons. The new addition ties into the existing roof of the Port Cocheaur, and a sliding glass door and knee wall would be constructed at or next to the rear corner of the historic house. This design creates a situation where the new construction would obscure the existing rear corner of the historic house. A Port Cocheaur is an element that is open, as historically they were intended to allow for vehicles to pass through. Adding a wall, as shown here, would close off this element and move it closer to an attached front-loaded garage, which would not meet the design guidelines since it would not be located at a basement level or face the side or rear property line. In order to meet the design guidelines, staff recommends that the new addition be detached from the existing Port Cocheaur and shifted about, and sorry, and shifted back approximately nine feet to where the 2017 addition comes back out to match the width of the historic house, which is shown here with the red box. With this condition, the Port Cocheaur would remain intact as an open element, and the historic rear corner that was preserved with the 2017 addition would also remain intact. The result would be an appropriate wider rear addition that is designed so that if it were to be removed in the future, the historic house's integrity would not be affected. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the conditions set forth in the staff recommendation, including the condition that the addition be detached from the Port Cocheaur and shifted approximately nine feet back to where this 2017 addition matches the width of the historic house.
Thank you, Ms. Sajit. And if the applicant is on the line, please announce yourself.
Good evening, this is Mark Thomas, and I'm working with Justin and Tracy Buck on this, on this project.
Okay.
Well, first, everybody sticking with this, I'm working a long, long day for you guys, for everybody else involved, but thank you for, the commission for considering the request we put forth for this project. When I met with Justin and Tracy, their vision for this was to continue the roof line for a covered porch over the existing patio that's currently there. What I think is, looking at the slide that's there now, there's a knee wall that was present and a shed that was present on historical components back pre-2017, and then also you see post 2017. The shed is still there, but there's still a considerable drop-off behind that, that vehicle there. So what we were hoping we could do is just basically, again, continue that roof line, which, and incorporate the knee wall across that back portion of the Port Cocheaur carpet with some either barn doors or sliding shutters, things like that, we could open up to still view the back portion of the property portion. Because it sits so far back from the road, they have no usable space, covered space back in the back other than the carpet itself. So we were, again, our request is, and taking the recommendations from, from the staff, moving that, that wall for that unit nine feet back really defeats a lot of the purpose of going from a covered space being a weather, quote-unquote, a weather-type material or roof line there, where you would leave the kitchen area through the carpet through a, an open area, and then on to the covered porch back in the back. Of course, also, we were hoping to incorporate a, a small, very small grill station, entertainment area back there, dining, things of that nature, that they can incorporate this whole side yard, since the backyard is basically, you know, a set, or I'm sorry, a storm sewer setback. But I don't know that the nine feet actually accomplishes what Tracy and Justin, excuse me, have in mind for this project. So that, again, to recap, the desire, the concept is to tie in, to continue the roof line that's currently there. And from the street, you won't be able to see any difference, I don't think, from what, what you're seeing there from either the pre-2017 or the post-2017 pictures of the back portion, other than a gate. And part of this also is for the security of the backyard. There's been some mention, some notifications around the neighborhood of some cars being looked into, not particularly broken into, but people or persons of interest looking into backyard doorways or back residence doorways and into cars. This would allow them some security by putting in a barn door slider above a knee wall and the gate that's currently down below to secure the backyard for those very reasons. Plus, they have a small child, and it would give them an extra added bonus of some security for that, for that child as well. Again, seeing what the, what the staff has recommended, based on the pictures that were shown from pre-2017 to post-2017, the vision we got in place doesn't really change the view shed from that, other than the fact we can open up these either plantation-type shutters or sliding barn doors, which we don't have the option now to open up the backyard view, so. So, um, if there's any questions, uh, you can direct them. I think Tracy's on the line as well, she's been watching throughout this, this whole process. If you have anything for me or for her, we're, we're standing by for that, for those questions or comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Does, uh, is it Mr. or Miss, Mrs. Buck? Do, do they have any comment? Okay. Seeing no raised hand. Okay, do we have any other public comment or no call ins and no public comments? So we will close public hearing. And discussion with commissioners.
Uh, Chair, this is Commissioner Jones. Um, it might not have seen my hand up. Uh.
No.
I want to ask, yeah, that's fine. Um, can you, whoever's running the presentation, just give us, you know, one of those red line drawings that y'all do, just go back. I'd just like to see exactly what, what they're proposing versus what, you know, what the staff has recommended. Um, is it just the same drawings that are in our packet?
This is Melissa Sajit again. Um, yes, the, the drawings are the same that are in your packet. They're proposing, um, to tie into the existing roof of the Port Cocheaur, which is shown here. Um, staff is recommending that they not do that, since you wouldn't, you wouldn't have seen that sort of addition historically on a Port Cocheaur, um, instead. And if, um, Melissa, you could go up two slot, yes. We're recommending that it be detached and shifted back, so, um, so that it line up with where this, um, more recent rear addition comes out to match the width of the, of the historic house. Um, and, and found that that would meet the design guidelines for a wider rear addition.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm having a little disconnection with my own laptop here, so maybe that's why I didn't see your hand, uh, Commissioner Jones. Okay. Well.
This, this is Commissioner Stewart. Um, I, I can understand the wishes of the homeowner and, uh, and, and what they're trying to do here. I, I do have to confirm though, that, that what we are charged with as a historic commission is to preserve the, you know, the character of the neighborhood as interpreted by the design guidelines adopted by the neighborhood, as well as by the, um, Department of the Interior Standards, uh, which, uh, which lay out pretty specifically, uh, the do's and don'ts of additions. And, and one of those is to preserve the character of things like Port Cocheaurs and to, uh, to not just bet up against them. So I think in, in this, uh, particular instance, although it may not be what the, what the applicant homeowners are desiring, uh, the staff recommendation, I think carries out both of those two charges that we as a commission have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I do agree with, uh, Vice Chair Stewart. I think Port Cocheaur is the one of the characteristic. So uttering, uh, this one of, uh, historic character and tie into new addition will, uh, in a way, uh, destroy, uh, the historical significance of the character. So I am, um, agreeing with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can we entertain a motion? Vice Chair Stewart?
Um, with, uh, with respect to this project with twelve oh eight, uh, twenty eight oh seven Twenty Seventh Avenue South, I, uh, uh, move for disapproval, uh, based on staff recommendations.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second? Commissioner Jones?
Uh, I was just gonna say, the, well, the staff recommends approval, but with the condition that it be moved, so I didn't, I didn't want to confuse anyone with that, Commissioner.
Exactly right, yep, I'm sorry, yeah, move for approval with staff, uh, conditions.
Okay, thank you for restating. Commissioner Jones?
Uh, I'll second that, Commissioner Jones.
Sorry, but Vice, Vice Chair made the motion and Commissioner Jones is second. So any other discussion? Okay. We'll call the roll. Yes or no? Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, and we move to nine two four Carruthers Avenue. And the public to call in is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And Ms. Baldock will be our presenter.
Nine two four Carruthers Avenue was constructed circa nineteen fifty-four and does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont overlay. Staff issued an administrative permit for the house's demolition in October twenty, twenty twenty. So just to review, when there is a, a structure that's already been previously determined to be non-contributing, staff has the ability to issue admin permits for their demolition. The applicant proposes a one and a half story duplex infill. It will meet all base zoning setbacks. Staff recommends that walkways be added from the sidewalk to the front entries. The infill's height is twenty-eight feet tall and its width is thirty-five feet. These both meet the immediate context. Staff recommends the vertical division of materials seen on the front facade be removed so the materials are continuous and the infill has a cohesive main form. Overall, the infill's height, scale, roof form, penetration pattern, setbacks, and rhythm of spacing, and orientation meet the design guidelines. Here are just some context photos. The lots on either side of the lot in question have detached, um, skinny detached duplexes constructed prior to the creation of the overlay. And staff recommends approval with the conditions that you see here on the screen. The applicant is in agreement with these conditions. Um, he is available if the commissioners have questions, but does not plan to speak unless there are questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Baldock. And, all right, so applicant is, uh, waiting the baby. Does the applicant wish to speak or not? Okay, well, okay, thank you very much. Um, any public comment or call in? All right, neither, so we will close public hearing. And commissioners to discuss? Or a motion? Commissioner Mayhaw?
Well, seeing that the applicant agrees with the staff, I, uh, make a motion to approve the, a staff recommendation with the conditions as outlined on, for nine twenty-four Carruthers Avenue.
Thank you. Vice Chair Stewart?
A second.
Okay, there's a first and a second. No other questions, we will call the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley? And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have three more to go. The next one is four oh five South Tenth Street. And the number again for the public is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And Ms. Warren will be our presenter.
Okay. The existing house at four oh five South Tenth Street does not contribute to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Staff has issued a demolition permit for the structure back in September. This application is for the construction of a duplex structure. Outbuildings do show in the site plan, but no elevations were submitted, so we're not reviewing those structures today. Uh, South Tenth Street marks the western boundary of the overlay. The subject lot is on the east side of Tenth Street between Fatherland and Shelby Avenue. As you can see, the entire east side of this block consists of non-contributing ranch houses. And across the street in the edge filled historic preservation overlay, the buildings are also non-contributing. There's no historic context on this block. In two thousand nineteen, the commission approved this duplex infill on the same block. And so staff used this structure as guidance for what would be appropriate here. Here are the proposed front and rear elevations. The massing is similar to the previously approved project, but staff is concerned because no foundation or grade is indicated. The addition of one to three feet of foundation height could push this ridge and eve height to be taller than the recommended parameters. Staff suggests that revised elevations are submitted, showing appropriate foundation height, a ridge no higher than thirty-one feet from grade, and eaves no taller than twenty feet from grade. The elevations include a change of material at the front, which gives the appearance that the second level is taller than the first level. This is not consistent with historic precedent. Staff recommends that the change in material be shifted higher on the facade, such that the two levels appear equal, or the first level is slightly taller. Also, the squared windows and the side elevations should be revised so that most of them are vertically oriented. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions as indicated in your report. The applicant has agreed to all these conditions. He is on the line and willing to answer questions, um, but did not wish to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Warren. Do we have any public comment or call in? Neither, so we will close public hearing and have discussion or motion. And thank, thank you applicant for working with staff and agreeing to all the recommendations. Vice Chair, Vice Stewart? Vice Chair Stewart?
It's been a long day, hasn't it?
A long day, yes, sir.
Chairman, with respect to four oh five South Tenth Street, um, move for approval, uh, with conditions, uh, outlined in the staff recommendation.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Fitz?
Second.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. Any other questions? Otherwise, I will take the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. We have four oh nine South Tenth Street as our next project, and that number again for the public is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And Ms. Warren, again, will present the project.
Yes, this is a proposal for an infill duplex with an outbuilding located at four oh nine South Tenth Street, which is two doors down from the previous case. This non-contributing house has already been demolished. As we just discussed, South Tenth Street has no historic context. In terms of height and scale, setbacks proportion of openings, known materials, roof form and orientation, the proposal meets the guidelines. The grade is indicated appropriately on the plans. As with all infill, staff should verify the foundation height in the field and should approve the materials prior to purchase and installation. The outbuilding meets all of the guidelines except for the footprint. The maximum allowable square footage is a thousand square feet. With the front porches, the maximum square footage, the square footage just exceeds this amount at about one thousand and twelve square feet. Staff recommends the footprint be reduced to no more than a thousand square feet. This could be accomplished by reducing the size of the porches, removing them, or even converting them to bracketed awnings as opposed to having posts to ground. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions as indicated in your report and seen on the screen. Uh, this applicant has also agreed to all the conditions. He is here as well, but does not wish to present, but is happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment or call in? Neither, so we will close public hearing and commissioners either have a question or a motion. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, um, similar to the previous one, um, these are great details, everything being, all work being done by staff, and, uh, I think it's a nice addition to, um, to that street with no historic context. So therefore, regarding four zero nine South Tenth Street, I move for approval with all recommendations outlined in our staff report.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Fitz?
Sorry, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we will call the roll. Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. We have our final project, nineteen hundred Oak Hill Drive. The number again for the public to call in is six two nine two five five one nine one one. And Ms. Baldock, please present our project.
All right. Nineteen hundred Oak Hill is a nineteen fifties ranch duplex that does not contribute to the historic character of the Lachlan Springs neighborhood. A demo permit for the structure was issued in November twenty twenty. The applicant proposes infill and a dadu on the lot. The setbacks meet the base zoning setbacks and the historic context. Here is a front and side street facades. Infill will be one and a half stories with a height of approximately twenty-eight feet and with a thirty-five feet, both of which meet the historic context. Here are the rear and left side elevations. Here are some three D models. Here is the dadu, which meets both the design guidelines and the dadu ordinance. Here are some context photos along Oak Hill. I just wanted to point out that the backyard of, uh, in nineteen hundred Oak Hill backs up to and shares a property line with the nineteen hundred block of Polly. And that is a block that suffered tremendous damage in the March, uh, tornado. Uh, the infill for nineteen hundred Oak Hill is consistent with the height and scales of the infill we approved for this block of Polly. Staff is recommending approval with our standard conditions that you can see there on the screen.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Baldock. And if the applicant is on the line and would like to speak, please announce yourself.
Hi, I'm Samantha Schneider. I'm the architect for the project, and I just want to say thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schneider. Do we have any public comment or any calls in? No, and so we have neither, and we will close public hearing. And commissioners, discuss questions? And I see Commissioner, oh, Vice Chair, wait, Commissioner Johnson first.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to, uh, thank, express my sincere appreciation to staff and also, uh, homeowners and architects, applicant. It is so wonderful to see non-contributing houses are now turning to more in line to historical in nature. So I am so glad to see our staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Vice, Vice Chair Stewart?
So with respect to this project, uh, I, uh, move for approval, um, with, uh, conditions based on staff recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
I second that motion. I second that.
Okay, there is a motion, there's a second. Are there any other questions? Comments? And none, seeing none, we will call the roll. Okay, Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayhaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Mosley?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Okay. And there you have it. Thank you, uh, very much for everyone hanging in here, also for applicants that have waited this long as well. And I know we have a couple more comments from Ms. Ziegler, but I just wanted to thank, uh, everyone, also, Metro IT, as, uh, they also are here to support us, so. Uh, Ms. Ziegler?
Thank you so much. I, I know it's late, but.
I, I know it's late, but just in case anyone's still listening, we wanted to let everyone know that there may be a chance that we can bring the consolidation project or conservation overlays back after the first of the year. And so to that end, we've created six informational videos that just give a very brief summary of the project. And that is on the section of the website about that project where there's a whole lot of other information if you want to dig deeper. Also, the Old House Fair, if you want to visit oldhousefair.org, that's now a virtual event. It's an informative website with information about things like how to research your old house, old windows, technical links and so forth. And there's also information on there about how to sign up to receive meeting agendas and participate in this process once you have established your own overlay. Thanks for giving me that extra opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ziegler, thank you, staff. Again, and the meeting is adjourned, and everyone have a safe night and stay well.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.